Good evening, folks. I'm going to first report that there is nothing to report out of a closed session that we just had. And we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. And please rise and join me in the flag ceremony.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item, please.
I'll take the roll call. Councilmember Lopez Taft.
Here.
Councilmember Middleton.
Here.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Here.
Vice Mayor Karpinski Costa.
Present.
And Mayor Daniels.
Here. Next item, please.
This meeting of the Citrus Heights City Council is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and ATU vers cable systems. This meeting is closed captioned and livestreamed at citrusheights.net. Tonight's meeting replays on Monday, March 18th at 9:00 a.m. on Channel 14. This meeting can also be viewed on the city's YouTube channel. The next item is approval of agenda.
Move approval?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Schaefer, seconded by Councilmember Lopez Taft. Any questions or comments on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? No? Passes. Next item, please.
Next item is presentation number four, proclamation of the City of Citrus Heights honoring community member John Barth.
Okay, I would like to invite John Barth, a longtime Citrus Heights resident and active community member, to the podium to accept the proclamation.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir. Go ahead and stand there. We're going to talk about how wonderful you are for a little bit. We'll let you talk.
Tell my family that.
And then get some pictures with all of us and all that fun stuff.
All right.
That one's yours. Oh, hold on. Is this the same? Okay, sorry about that.
Sure.
It's a proclamation of the City of Citrus Heights honoring community member John Barth. Whereas John Barth has been a resident of Citrus Heights for 59 years, and for over 25 years, he has served the community by devoting countless hours to collecting donations of canned food and cash contributions during the winter holiday season to support the Holy Family Church Food Bank and Wednesday night dinners that serve those in need. And whereas John has enthusiastically volunteered his time and has expanded his efforts by collecting donations to support a variety of organizations, including the Chayson Neighborhood Area Christmas Tree Giving Project that works with Woodside K-8 and church groups to support children in need, the Underground Clothing Store by donating 40 pairs of new shoes and money to purchase new underwear for San Juan Unified School District youth, the Mariposa Elementary School to support their after-school study program, the Toys for the Troops Kids, thank you, sir, by collecting donations for children of military families, and to Alfred Sanchez, also known in the community as the Snack Man, to help purchase food for the homeless. And whereas John is also known for joyously brightening the December holidays with his neighborhood coordination and display of the Orel Creek Court Holiday Lights attracting thousands to drive or walk by each year, and last year, John and his friends popped, bagged, and handed out over 4,000 bags of popcorn to visitors, the majority of which was donated by pastors auto repair, and he was named winner of the 2022 Best Lights in Citrus Heights Holiday Campaign. And whereas John has planted and maintains lilies on the old Auburn Trail near his house to help contribute towards the beautification of Citrus Heights, now therefore be resolved that the City Council of the City of Citrus Heights does hereby thank and honor John Barth for his service and impact to the community of Citrus Heights and for serving as an inspiration to others. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Oh, I was hoping.
Any comments? Any comments? Comments, anybody?
Nope.
Okay, I'll just take a moment to say thank you. If people would do, oh my God, a tenth of what you did, a hundredth of what you've done, I just can't imagine how things would be in our city and surrounding areas. If people understood, only understood, just get up off the couch. Get up off the couch and do something for your community, and you've done it over and over and over and over again, and I'm so greatly appreciative of that because it is without a doubt because of you the success we have in Citrus Heights. So, thank you so much. Any words?
Well, I need to thank a few people, Regina and Armando, for setting me up with the things I need to block the street off, so no parks, and then all my neighbors who, for the last 25 years or so, have forced me to add more lights because they want more lights. So, other than that, it's a team effort out there, and our REACH Association or CHASM Association with their help because my kids are getting older, and in fact, my popcorn girl just quit after this year because we gave out 1,000 bags on Christmas Eve, and she cooked for five hours.
Well, Natalie Price is right behind you. She's got a lot of free time, and if you need some help.
Yeah, we'll need help. We need help. So, what I would like to ask, if there's anybody that you folks know or in communication with, my big popcorn machine broke two years ago, so we've been using a small one, and we had to Uber microwave popcorn to help keep up. So, I had one daughter in the kitchen making microwave, and the other daughter in the garage making popcorn. And so, yeah, I need a big commercial machine. Like, it lasted me 25 years, but this last one that I thought was commercial is made for people that want to sit on Sunday evenings and watch movies. So, I appreciate everything that the city's done for me, and our association had really helped me a lot this year with the volunteers to hand out popcorn. So, it's a community effort.
Yeah.
And we have a good old time.
Good.
And Christmas Eve is over, I wake up Christmas Day, and what am I going to do the next month? So, we're looking forward to next year. We'll be out there again.
Thank you, sir. Go ahead and step up here. We're going to step down. Oh, I'm sorry.
I have a question.
Hold on.
What's your December smud bill?
Before LED, it was 600. Now, I'm all LED, so I went from 60 plugs around my house to about seven, and the LED probably 100, 100 for the month.
Jeez.
It's the popcorn machine that adds the power.
All right, we're going to come down and take a picture with you, John.
All right.
I'll go with you. Thank you, John. Appreciate you all. Come on, get your... Okay, next item, please.
The next item is presentation number five, a proclamation of the City of Citrus Heights proclaiming March 2024 as Women's History Month, and we do have two organizations joining us tonight with the Citrus Heights Seroptimists and the Citrus Heights Women's Club. So, we have two proclamations to present to them. They're identical, teach organization.
Thank you, and we're going to have Councilmember Lopez Taft present this.
It is my pleasure to welcome both organizations, the Citrus Heights Seroptimists Club and the Citrus Heights Women's Club, to the podium, please. Feel free to come on up together. I'm so excited to present these proclamations because I am a member of both of these organizations, and I must say, they do a lot in the community, unsung heroes to be sure.
Jane, don't you belong to both organizations?
I do, I do.
Proclamation of the City of Citrus Heights proclaiming March 2024 as Women's History Month, whereas Women's History Month is a celebration of women's contributions to history, culture, and society, and has been observed annually in the month of March in the United States since 1987. And whereas the National Women's History Alliance has designated this year's theme to celebrate women who advocate for equity, diversity, and inclusion, and whereas generations of women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic, economic, political, and social achievements that have left a profound and positive impact on society and contributed to the growth and strength of Citrus Heights in countless recorded and unrecorded ways. And whereas women have been leaders, not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist emancipation, industrial labor, civil rights, and peace movements, making great strides in our common quest for freedom and opportunity. And whereas this month, we celebrate countless courageous women for their past and present victories, now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Citrus Heights does hereby recognize the month of March 2024 as Women's History Month and honor women's contributions in Citrus Heights and American history. So, if I can invite, if you'd like to make some comments, do we have other comments from council before we invite our guest comments?
Nope, I don't think so.
All right.
Anybody want to make some comments?
Well...
This is Barb Pryor, the president-elect of the Seroptimists Club.
Thank you, Jane. Thank you, Citrus Heights City Council. It's been incredible year for our Seroptimists International of Citrus Heights as part of a global organization that's over 100 years old. The Citrus Heights Club is actually 50 years old. Did you know that? We have been able to have many community fundraisers, particularly our Fall Into Fashion, Dinner at Pescatory Wine, and the Crab Fried where we partner with Kiwanis. We have been able to serve our community through the Citrus Heights Police Department, especially during the holidays, Single Mom Strong, Three Strands, the Table, Children's Receiving Home, and our educational scholarships for single women and our scholarships for high school girls. We donate to the Unified School District and the Culinary Department with our new culinary business. Some of you may remember our honored club member Jean Duncan and Mesa Verde High School. We support our program at Dream It Be It, which Jane is in charge of that, a day with our Seroptimists to learn how to obtain and live your dream through higher education. Our service projects with Kiwanis this year is with Mesa Verde High School, where we've been doing a vegetable and flower garden, and they have all-new planter boxes, dirts, and plants, and we also partnered with Kiwanis on that as well. The unique thing about this year was our group Business Owners, who are called Connections, who hosted a fundraiser for us, and with that Connections fundraising, the Citrus Heights Club donors and partners with Three Strands so that we can educate the whole San Juan Unified School District through Three Strands to help anti-trafficking through kindergarten through 12th grade. And it's our joy to be a part of the community, and we do accept new members.
Anybody else?
Thank you. And I'll invite Jean Marie Willby as the president of the Women's Club of Citrus Heights.
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for this honor. We are truly blessed. We are a small club, but we are very active in what we want to do. We had a tea that we put on, and we also had a... of... I lost my train of thought, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Of an artistic paint night that we put on that was non-alcoholic, by the way, because we held it at the Sylvan Community Center. It was very enjoyable by all, and we did put a Finding Your Goddess Within, which was all about the Greek goddesses and which one you were closely aligned with. So, we've had some fun activities. cards so they could select something that they want. And then we're looking forward to doing the friendship bags, and that's going to be just on the brink, and we're going to be doing that with the Oars and also Coger from Stock Ranch. And then Meals on Wheels is another link that we're going to be doing it with, you know, providing the seniors. So, we love reaching out, we love being a part of the community, we love creating partnerships with people, and we love our Seroptimists sisters, too. So, it's a real blessing to be here as a group with all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to stay there. Take a picture? Come on. No?
Let's double up here a little bit.
There we go.
Do you want to do separate groups? Just fine. I think they deserve their own pick, too. I think that's fair. So, if you don't mind, we'll swoosh together a little bit.
Thank you. And we'll have our next round.
Can we either bunch you a little closer? Are we okay?
A little bit closer.
Okay.
A little bit closer.
Okay. Okay.
A little bit closer.
Okay.
Thank you, and we'll have our next round.
All done, Jane, okay?
I told today. Tall shoes.
Can we either bunch you a little closer? Are we okay?
A little bit closer.
Okay.
Did you get it counted?
We're good, I got it.
All right. So, we're good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All done, Jane, okay?
I told today.
Can we either bunch you a little closer? Are we okay?
A little bit closer.
A little bit closer.
Okay.
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 Attended the potluck. Thank you for those of you who helped with the potluck. Thank you to the city for the use of the community center. It really did bring our community members together. It was great to just look at a panel of women up here and say, oh, I saw them at the potluck. And earlier, when you mentioned the snack man, I had never met the snack man. I had heard all these stories. And I met the snack man at the community potluck. And so if you have not donated socks, please donate socks for the snack man to distribute. This is the way that community works together. But I have a whole lot of other thank yous. I'd like to thank Black Angus and Safe Credit Union. Both of these provided prizes for our community potluck. We had a lot of gift baskets that were provided by various community organizations. Citrus Heights Water District, Citrus Heights Heart, Half Price Books, Dematte Real Estate Team, Republic Services, Sunrise Marketplace, and Taste of Tuscany Italian Restaurant. We also had some food that was donated. Leatherbury's brought out a whole lot of ice cream, always a crowd pleaser. And Citrus Heights Water District donated some desserts. We actually had an excess of their cupcakes, which we then passed on to the Sayonara Center. Again, a good way that community just feeds into itself. We had a few other partners, though. We had the Sunrise Christian Ministry really came through and provided a whole lot of kids' Easter-themed treats that we turned into beautiful Easter baskets for our children attending the event. Lowe's here in town gave us 20 beautiful floral plants that we were able to pass out as prizes to lucky winners. We also had neighborhood areas provide baskets. I'd like to shout out Rush Park Neighborhood 2, Park Oaks Neighborhood 5, Sunrise Ranch Neighborhood 6, Citrus Heights Area 7, 8, 9 Chason, and Area 10 Sore. All of these neighborhoods provided a lot of baskets as well. So overall, a really great event, a great turnout, and I just wanted to come up here and say thank you.
Just made the number of people that came? Could you estimate that?
We had 160 RSVPs. We set up for 200, and I would say we had about 40 empty seats when you smushed them all. So about 160 showed.
Very nice.
Yep. Thank you.
Next up will be, I think it's Lucero Soto. And Lucero, are you going to speak or just interpret? You're going to speak yourself?
I'm an interpreter right here. I'll do it in English.
Okay. Are you going to speak, though?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, City Council. My name is Lucero Soto. I am a community organizer with Sacramento Area Congregations Together, also known as Sacramento Act. We are a faith-based organization that is multi-faith, multi-race, and multilanguage. We have been creating relationships with community members and congregations for over 30 years. We focus on building relationships and developing leaders with leadership with ordinary people. We have worked in the past to pass policies around housing and healthcare access. We also partner with SETA and Sac City District in the past to create the parent-teacher home visit that is now a national approach. I have the pleasure to work alongside with parents from local schools, including Citrus Heights and San Juan Unified School District. Together, we share a vision for our public education. Thank you.
And then next up will be Norma Martinez.
Hola, buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Norma Martinez. He venido siendo residente de la ciudad de Citrus Heights por los últimos diez años. Tengo tres hijos, dos graduados de San Juan Distrito Escolar, y ahora estudiantes de Sacramento State, y una niña en la escuela Silvan Middle School. Siendo un padre líder por los últimos siete años y ahora trabajando con Sacramento Act. Somos un grupo de padres latinos unidos trabajando para mejorar el ambiente escolar de nuestros hijos tanto académicamente como socialmente. Y queremos unirnos a ustedes para así juntos poder mejorar mejorar la educación de nuestros hijos y mejorar nuestras escuelas para tener una mejor comunidad. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Norma Martinez, and I am here to let you know that I have been a resident for the last 10 years at Citrus Heights. I have three children. Two have graduated from San Juan District, and they are now students at Sacramento State. I have a daughter at the school, Sylvan Middle School. She, I am a parent leader. I have been for the last seven years, and I have been working now with Sacramento Act. We are a group of Latin parents united and working together to improve the environment, the school environment for our children. We want to support them academically and socially, and we want to unite together, and we want to join you. And collaboration, we want to work together with you with the education for our children and improving our schools and improving our community.
Thank you very much. Next up is Tatiana Sanchez.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Tatiana Sanchez. Tengo 10 años viviendo en Citrus Heights. Tengo dos hijos asistiendo a las escuelas del Distrito de San Juan y soy líder de Sacramento Act. Formo parte de un grupo de padres latinos por la educación y por nuestra comunidad en el cual hemos aprendido herramientas de cómo organizar y cómo ayudar a nuestra comunidad. Y estamos aquí para antablar relaciones positivas y crear una sociedad para juntos ayudar a nuestra comunidad. Gracias.
Good evening. My name is Tatiana Sanchez. I've been living in Citrus Heights for the last 10 years. I have children attending to San Juan School District. I am a parent leader, and I am with Sacramento Act. I am part of the parent leaders, the Latin Latinos parent leaders for our education and our communities. And we have been learning different tools on how to organize and help our community. We are here to establish positive relationships and create a united society to help our community.
Thank you very much. Next up is Lydia Melendez.
Buenas tardes a todos los miembros del Consejo de la Ciudad. Mi nombre es Lydia Melendez. Mi esposo y yo somos residentes de Citrus Heights por más de 20 años. Tenemos tres hijos. El mayor se graduó el año pasado del Distrito Escolar de San Juan y actualmente es miembro activo del ARMY. El segundo está en su último año de high school y la más pequeña en la primaria en escuelas pertenecientes al Distrito Escolar de San Juan Unificado. Soy parte del grupo de padres líderes de Sacramento Act. Somos un grupo dedicado a mejorar la experiencia escolar de nuestros hijos e incrementar la participación de los padres en las escuelas. Estamos aquí para compartir con ustedes nuestra visión acerca de la importancia de crear conexiones entre el sistema educativo, las familias, y el gobierno local para mantener a nuestros hijos sanos y seguros. Y también para hacerles una invitación a tenernos en consideración al momento de tomar decisiones que puedan tener un impacto en nuestras vidas. Gracias.
Good evening to all the members of the council. My name is Lydia Melendez. My husband and I have lived in Citrus Heights for over 20 years. We have three children. The oldest just graduated from the San Juan School District, and he is an active member of the ARMY. The second one is in his second, he's in his last year of high school. And the youngest is in elementary, and they belong to the San Juan Unified School District. I am part of a parent leader in Sacramento, of Sacramento Act, and we are a group dedicated to improve the academic experience for our children. And we are here and want to increase the participation of the parents in the schools. We are here to share with you our vision about the importance of creating connections with the educational system, the families, and the local government to keep our children healthy and safe. And also to invite you to give you, to make an invitation to take this into consideration in making decisions and so we can all create a positive impact in our lives. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, that's the last card I have. All the other speaker cards I have are for items on the agenda. So if anybody else wanted to speak just on public comment, come running now. Seeing none, we'll go to the next item.
The next item is comments by council members and regional board updates.
Start with Councilmember Middleton, please.
Okay. March 7th, we had our Metro Cable meeting. This was to ratify our schedule for the year, which we decided to add in two additional meetings. So we'll have to come back again to the board to look at, see how there's going to fit in for the year. We usually meet once a quarter, but we recognize there's a lot more business that needs to be done. So we are working on changing that schedule up a little bit. We also went over the cable casting fees because there is a bit of a stretch for staff and a bit of a deficit in the budget for the services that are being provided. We have 13 non-member agencies who are paying around $12,000 a year to have their meetings cable cast, translated, and closed captioned. And we're trying to figure out a way to include these non-member agencies into cost sharing so that like, you know, Citrus Heights pays a certain amount, so does Folsom, Elk Grove. We all participate in this. And with the limited amount of funding that we're getting back from Comcast and AT&amp;T, we have to figure out how we're going to do that. So if anybody doesn't have cable, maybe you should get cable so we can get more fees, right? And we also gave out a ton of money to our local folks who do different types of channeling programming for our community grants program. Let's see. Then, just got back in last night, 8 o'clock from DC. I went to the National League of Cities. I am currently serving as our Sacramento Valley Division President. And there's, this was really great. The city is not a member of the National League of Cities. We should really check into that because this is great stuff that we're learning about there. We'd had multiple deep dive sessions, all of which I attended, and I want to kind of meet one-on-one with my colleagues to go over what was in those sessions to see if there's anything that we would like to kind of implement here. But just some of the things that we did there. Aligning workforce development plans for economic growth. Obviously, that is something that really hits home with Citrus Heights, and it's something that, you know, with federal grants, federal grants and state grants, we are able to kind of figure out how we can fund local workforce programs, rescaling and upscaling workers, which, you know, Councilmember Schaefer, I know that's a big thing for you. We talked about water infrastructure and environmental protection in rural, urban, and suburban communities. And I know that we have some folks here to sit on the sewer district, and that's important for us to have clean water. So we talked about funding clean and drinking water, solid waste management, improving access to outdoor recreation and more. And of course, there was always the talk about housing and homelessness, federal aid, and promising practices. And so learning how we can use our community development block grant programs and flexible funding programs for accessible and affordable housing initiatives. We've already kind of figured that out in Citrus Heights. If you remember, on Sayonara Drive, we actually partnered with Habitat for Humanity to have those lots rebuilt. So nothing really new there, but it was still interesting to see other cities throughout the nation be really excited about that. And what was the last one that I really enjoyed? Leveraging technology and innovation to build strong local communities. So we learned about strengthening broadband and cybersecurity. We know with AI and the things that are happening in our community that we have to really be looking forward thinking about this. But more importantly, how do we have access to broadband in all of our neighborhoods? That is really a critical thing when we're thinking about rebuilding and retooling our different areas, making sure that when we're digging once, we're putting down as much broadband fiber and making sure we're partnering with those people who are going to provide internet at a reasonable cost. What I did learn was that, starting April 1st, the Affordable Broadband Act will expire. It's not in our federal budget. So those of our students who actually got AT&amp;T Wi-Fi hotspots and have been using them since the pandemic, they will no longer have access. And that is something that I sat down and took the time to speak with our senator, speak with our congressman about, and say that, you know, we really need to put that back into the budget because we need for our children to have access to, you know, to the internet, to be able to do their homework, to be able to study. There's a lot of things that the San Juan has even brought in that you have to have internet access for if you want after-school tutoring, for instance. If you have language barriers, for ESL students. This is something that we really need to be paying attention to. So I did lobby and advocate. I couldn't participate in the Hill Day because if I had, the storm would have caught me, and you wouldn't see my great face here today to tell you about all this amazing stuff. And that is my report.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Lopez.
All right. On the 28th, we met with the San Juan Unified School District in our combination collaborative meeting. I really like those meetings because we discuss quarterly, and that's been a nice restart to that collaborative effort. On March 7th, I attended the Citrus Heights Chamber Board Meeting. And what's really important about the board is many of your city council members are on other boards, not just regional assignments or local assignments, but boards that are their passion projects as well. And the chamber is one of my passion projects. As a former business owner, really want to encourage businesses to come to Citrus Heights. We are a great place to live, and we want more people to come and invest their business dollars here. On the 8th, I attended another business-oriented organization's event, the National Association of Women Business Owners. We had a program that we gave a grant to through our community grant, and we held a business pitch competition here in our conference room. And we awarded a specific award to one of the pitch winners. And so it was so delightful to see young people who are thinking about starting businesses get the courage to do a formal pitch and receive feedback from the business community. And that is a nice kind of bow on what is one of the benefits of our community grant award. On the 9th, I attended the Citrus Heights Little League Opening Day with Councilmember Schaefer, Ash, and our police chief, and many, many police department representatives. That was just so much fun to see little three-year-olds all the way to middle school, participating in local sports, and families getting together because that's who we are here in Citrus Heights. I also attended the Reach Potluck. Thank you, Natalie, and Reach team for all of your hard work. Just a spectacular event. As residents, we need to find ways to gather. And this was a fun, fun, low-entry way to get in touch with your community. In keeping up with my district and the school that I have in my district, I had a personal meeting with the vice principal at Woodside just to see how they're doing. Doing really well. And I can't say enough about participating in your schools. I know we talk about tonight, it feels like we're focusing on schools, but we shouldn't just take one night to focus on our schools. Volunteer, be a reader, volunteer to be a crossing guard. You know, we had a great presentation from our local PTO who said, "We need help before and after school to get kids safely to our campus." And our neighborhood area is very, very receptive to that. So get involved. Even if you don't have schoolchildren, it's almost a better time because it's that much more fun. And finally, save the date. Just something that we, again, doing in the community. The Seroptimists just talked about what they're doing at Mesa Verde. That particular event is a career readiness-type event, and it's called Dream It, Be It. And that will be on April 9th, and I'll be participating in that. That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Schaefer.
Thank you, Mayor. So I did have the pleasure of attending the Little League Opening Day, which was fantastic. I was really, they have 17 teams there. It was really a lot of fun. And I was delighted to see that they took advantage of the Citrus Heights Block Party Trailer. I helped unload that and set up tables, and it was a great, really, really great event. I also, well, on Monday morning, I actually reported for jury duty, which is a lot of fun. And I would say kudos to the new system that Sacramento County is using. They actually, pretty much right when we got there, we were dispatched to a courtroom, went through the Wadiir process, and were dismissed before noon. That was a fantastic experience. And there weren't a gazillion jurors down there. They pretty much seemed like, it felt like they ordered the number of jurors to report that they needed. And once they got their juries filled, everybody left for the day. So that was a really, a really great experience. I've done, had jury duty many times, and this was a very seamless process. That same night, I did attend the Reach Potluck, which was a great deal of fun. So good to see so many people coming out and getting together again after so many years of sort of being dormant. And so I really appreciate it. Thank you, Natalie, and thank you, Reach, for all the hard work you put into that. It was really a fantastic event. Enjoyed it very, very much. So with that, that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you so much. Vice Mayor Karpinski.
Well, you had a better experience at jury duty than I did because it was crowded, there was nowhere to sit when we all got there. I was the last group to go upstairs, and we didn't go upstairs, so we got to go home. So it was just a waste of my morning to stand there and to go nowhere. So you had a good experience, good for you. So since the last council meeting, I attended Area 4 and 6 Meet Together, and I went to their meeting, and our city manager was the speaker. You did a good job. And well-attended meeting. And then I went to Area 10 Meeting. Not so well-attended. I think what we need to do is get our word out more about neighborhoods and open our arms to... We get, we've been getting a lot of dialogue from experts and how we, we aren't set in stone. We take all ideas, and every idea is important. And so we aren't doing, this is the way we've always done it system. So I think that people just have to go on the website, find out where you, what neighborhood you're in, and then just kind of go. There's some neighborhoods right now are in the middle of being organized and need all the help they can get to get on the map. I did go to, hang on, I got glasses issues here. Oh, I went to the community meeting that talked about the increased sewer rates. And we had our guy from the sewer district at his PowerPoint. Three people were there besides me. And so I felt bad that our city did not have... I mean, that's all happy with your sewer rates going up, and nobody wanted to why or see the numbers. And so when you get your bill in July, and, you know, we get billed every two months. So it's going to look big because it isn't so much a month, but it's for two months on your bill. So I was disappointed we didn't have a good turnout at the community center. But then I felt better when he told me, when he went to Folsom, he had three people there. So it wasn't like we were any worse than Folsom. I did attend the Reach Potluck, and it's a wonderful event. I got one of the Lowe's plants, and I thought it was just wonderful. These were big jonquils and a big, beautiful, with fake lights around it. It was just nice. Thank you, Lowe's, for my plant. I did go to the collaborative meeting. The issue was human trafficking. It's enlightening. It's an organization that helps people recover. And so it's, it was very informative and almost shaking that these things go on in our community. It's bad. And then I went to the regular sewer meeting. Lasted all of, I don't think, five minutes. That we didn't have just one, you know, one consent calendar, and out we went. I did go to, oh, the mosquito meeting will be next week, but I want to remind people that this is heartworm season. Heartworm in dogs is carried by the tree hole mosquito that lives in tree holes up there. So you can't really drain your tree. So best is to protect your dog. So talk to your veterinarian about various heartworm preventions, and let you know that the district does do yellow jackets. They came out today. We have bad yellow jackets in the backyard. My husband Ted, who I love dearly, thought they were honeybees. So he bought a bee box, and he thought, well, he'll buy a queen, stick the queen in the box, and these honeybees will come into his... Uh-uh. So they were yellow jackets. And so the district does, free of charge, remove yellow jackets from your property. So they live in the ground. This group is living in a overturned, dead, hollow tree. So, and, you know, a guy puts on his little gear, goes out and puts the tracking powder in there. And so anyways, it's, if you need the district, you can call. Remind you of that. And then I did go to the Veterans, St. Patrick's Day, Veterans St. Patrick's Day Lunch. And Ash couldn't make it. So I gave them your regards. They were happy. And then I gave them the Irish toast that said, "May you live as long as you want and never want as long as you live." And that's my report.
All right.
I told him it came from you.
Thank you very much. Yeah, not real busy. Attended the Reach Potluck. Thank you, Natalie, for putting on a great event. It was a whole lot more fun and a whole lot more people than I expected. And really good food. And some people out there can really cook. So it was a good time, a lot of fun, and I won a raffle prize, so it was a good night. Got to take that home to the little one. She didn't win anything.
I didn't.
Oh. Attended the STA Board Meeting today. Nothing really to report out of that. From the Regional Transit Board Meeting a couple of days ago, only real thing to report out of that is that they are in the process of revamping their logo. Citing stuff. And so if you're artistic in nature and whatnot, you might want to reach out to the RT and see about participating in revamping the logo. Sunrise Marketplace Board Meeting today, a good time. If you don't know, the Sunrise Marketplace is the P-Bid Professional Business...
Improvement.
Improvement District. It's the one square mile area around Sunrise Mall, basically. And it's a group that works to keep that area thriving, and they do a great job. Absolutely wonderful job. We're going to hear from the director here in a little bit. But good job. Good things are happening in the district. Some of the buildings, which are very few, but some of the buildings that we've seen vacant for a long time may be occupied soon, so that would be wonderful. And we will continue to appreciate that area because it is so critical to the success of Citrus Heights. Today, I had lunch at Arlington Heights School with my beautiful daughter. And I just want to give a personal shout-out to Principal Martinez. He does a great job there. He's extremely involved. He's out there with the kids. He's out there before school starts. He's out there during lunch. He's out there when school's out. He's in, he's involved, and I greatly appreciate him very much. We have, I'm continuing to do Mondays with the mayor. This last one was quite fun with some great visits from some great people. So if you would like to come by City Hall on Mondays between 9:00 AM and 12:00 PM, I'll be there every Monday that the City Hall is open, and we can discuss whatever it is on your mind, have a cup of coffee, a muffin. And I want to thank the vice mayor, who recently filled in for me. There were a couple of complaints, but, no, she did a great job, and I greatly appreciate you doing that for me. And then finally, coming up, March 28th, we will have our strategic planning retreat. If you have nothing to do and really want a stimulating time, come on out from 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM or so. I think this one's going to run long, I think. And so come out, and it's basically, we get together and we take a deeper dive into what we want to see the city do over the next few years and stuff like that. So come on out and join us, right here in this building, right? Yeah? Oh, Community Center. Oh, we're really getting fancy, yeah. So we're going to do it over at the Community Center. And I believe that is all I have. So next item, please. Oh, can I just ask real quick, before we move on, if the council would join me and if it's okay? Ryan, if we could move item 12 in front of item 11? I'm thinking item 11 is going to be a very long item, well over an hour. And if we could push the Sunrise Marketplace report out, I'd like to do that if there's no objections. Can we do that?
That's over an hour, too.
Yeah? Oh, no, no, no. Okay, we're going to do that then? Okay, all right. Next item, please.
Next item is Consent Calendar, items 6, 7, 8, and 9.
Does anybody wish to pull any items off the consent calendar? Hearing none, I'll take a motion. Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Schaefer, seconded by Councilmember Middleton. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Next up, next item, please.
Next item is Public Hearing, item number 10. The subject is Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report. And the recommendation is to conduct a public hearing to review the city's consolidated annual performance report for the Community Development Block Grant Program, year 2023, and to adopt a resolution approving the annual performance evaluation report for program year 2023, and direct staff to submit with minor modifications to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. Nicole Piva with the Community Development Department. So this item before you tonight is the Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report, also known as the CAPR. So the purpose of tonight's meeting is to hold a public hearing, consider the adoption of the Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report for program year 2023, and then to direct staff to submit the CAPR to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. I note- I know tonight's a full agenda. I just want to take a quick minute to go over what is a CAPR. This report describes how the city's annual community development block grant funding, which is CDBG funds, are used during the program year. As a function of receiving these funds, this report is a requirement and will be submitted to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development within 90 days after the close of the program year. This report was included in your packet. So I just wanted to highlight a few accomplishments. In 2023, the city received a little over $600,000. These funds allow the city to carry out several housing and community development programs that target, targeted primarily low-income households. Over the last year, the city worked with nonprofits who provided successful programs and services to our residents. The funded programs included an after-school program, senior meals, case management, landlord, tenant, and fair housing counseling, food pantry, and a critical home repair grant program. So as part of the citizen participation process, a public notice was published in the Citrus Heights Messenger in February. And the report has been made available in several public locations, including the city's website, for a 15-day public review and comment period. As of tonight, we have not received any public comment, but if we do, we will include it in the final report. So I'm available for any questions. We have two recommendations before you tonight.
Any questions for staff before we open the public hearing? Nope, nope. Okay, this is a public hearing. I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. I have no speaker sheets. Anybody speaking? Nobody rushing to the podium to speak on this important matter? Going to go ahead and close the public hearing. And any questions or comments now of staff? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
Like to make a motion, adopt resolution number 2024, resolution of the City Council of the City of Citrus Heights, California, approve the Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report for program year 2023 and direct staff to submit with minor modifications as necessary, the CAPR report to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Could you repeat that?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Schaefer and seconded by Councilmember Middleton. Any questions or comments regarding the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next item, please.
Next item, so we'll take item number 12 on regular calendar. The subject is Approval of Sunrise Marketplace Property-Based Improvement District 2023 Annual Report. The recommendation is to adopt a resolution approving the Sunrise Marketplace 2023 Annual Report.
Good evening, Mayor Daniels and members of City Council. I'm Megan Huber, Economic Development and Community Engagement Director. I have a quick and easy item before you this evening because the annual report included with the staff report certainly speaks for itself. A year of great results by our Sunrise Marketplace Property Business Improvement District. I know Mayor and Council knows very well who the Sunrise Marketplace is. For those in the audience who may not, it's the Property-Based Business Improvement District that represents the square mile area in our Sunrise Marketplace with Sunrise Mall right in the center. We consider it the city's primary economic engine. And as part of their incorporation, they're required by law to provide an annual report to the City Council, of which is included in the packet this evening. The P-Bid Board of Directors approved the annual report just today, so consider it hot off the presses and are ready to present this report to you this evening. In the audience, I would like to recognize Executive Director Kathie Lynn Carpenter, representing Sunrise Marketplace. And the recommendation is to approve Sunrise Marketplace's 2023 Annual Report.
Thank you, Megan. Mayor, Councilmembers, I don't have a report this evening. I know it's going to be a long meeting and I think the report speaks for itself. We did a little extra this year because it's our 25th anniversary. So I do encourage you to read it if you have time because it's a little look back too at some stuff we've done the last 25 years. As you know, we're in renewal and we did make our petition threshold last week. With the petition we just got, we're a little over 53%. So we'll keep working that. Amy has kindly given us until the end of day, business day on Monday. So we will keep collecting petitions and then, as you know, the city will mail out ballots and see how that goes. So I just wonder if you had any questions or?
Any questions, comments for the speaker? Yeah, go ahead.
I like your report and I tell you, I read it and then I looked at this one little purple thing. I'm not sure what page it's on. What happens if SMP bid is not renewed? And they have all these bullet points. And it's, it's hard for people to understand how important this is to our city. Because if it's not renewed, all the things that wouldn't be there, we'd look like Florin Mall. And it, our mall does look nice when you come in. I think in general, people feel safe being there. And I think all the stuff you've done to keep the trash and the garbage out of, you know, picking up the stuff, how many loads of vehicle? I mean, I was reading how much bags of garbage you picked up and I'm like, wow, I mean, this is, you know, something you guys do. And I just want you to know that I want to appreciate the, the, the P-Bid for being there.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Go ahead, Councilmember Schaefer.
So I'd just like to comment, not to, not to correct you.
Okay, you can correct me, that's fine.
The Sunrise Marketplace is a lot more than the Sunrise Mall.
Well, I meant, I say the mall.
It's a big area. It's a, it's a.
I knew what you meant.
I meant the, it's my shortcut. I mean, the whole business.
All right, very good. Well, I just wanted to point that out, number one. And Kathie Lynn, thank you very much for your hard work. It is, I know it's incredibly stressful and, and I, I can't tell you how much I appreciate all the effort you put in.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Appreciate the support.
Yeah, I'm going to echo that. I, I wish people could understand the, the absolute power that this organization brings to that area and then brings to our city. Without the sales tax base, Citrus Heights does not thrive. And this is the major hub of the sales tax base in Citrus Heights. And so the work that you do is, is critical, critical to the success of Citrus Heights. And I don't think anybody does it any better. So there are P-Bids that have popped up since ours popped up and more and more business owners are understanding the importance and the success that comes with them. And so I certainly hope that we can get that approval finalized. And if you need to have phone calls made, let us know because business owners need to understand how great it is to have this. Okay, anything else for her? Okay, go sit down.
Thank you.
Okay, I do need a motion, right? Yeah, I do. So any motions on this item?
I'll move we approve the Marketplace Property-Based Improvement District 2023 Annual Report.
I second.
Okay, it's been moved by Vice Mayor Karpinski Costa and seconded by Councilmember Schaefer. Any questions or comments to the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, next item, please.
The next item is regular calendar, item number 11. The subject is the Citrus Heights Education Committee Report. And good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers, Amy Van, City Clerk. So this item before council, I just wanted to provide a very brief background before we invite the committee forward. So in March of 2023, the City Council approved the formation of a limited-term Citrus Heights Education Committee to examine the feasibility of forming a Citrus Heights School District. A committee of seven members was appointed by the City Council and they met for eight times over the last nine months. The city did retain a facilitator, Mr. Cyrus Abar, to assist with the facilitation of the meetings. So this evening, I would like to introduce Mr. Abar and the members of the Citrus Heights Education Committee who will present their findings and recommendations to the City Council.
Thank you, Amy. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers. It's a pleasure to be here before you tonight and present the findings and recommendations of the Education Committee. I would like, before I start, I would like to take a minute and thank the Education Committee members for their hard work. They dedicated many hours of their personal time to research through a whole variety of data and information. And, and what I can tell you in working with the Education Committee for the last nine months, these are a group of incredibly dedicated individuals, community members who care deeply about the education in our community, for our children. And they have spent tremendous amount of energy to bring the item to you tonight. So if you indulge me, I'm going to take a minute and introduce the members of the committee that are here tonight. From, from my far right is Jeanne Bruins, Jessica Fork, Laura Wilbur, James Remick, and John Kane. And two members of our committee, Karen Mix and Robin Stout, had other commitments tonight. Unfortunately, I believe they're traveling and we're not able to, to be here tonight. So just a little bit about the, the process and, and what we were going to present to you this evening. Our presentation will have four distinct parts. It's some of the data that was reviewed and analyzed and John Kane will present the, the set of data that we looked at. Then we will talk a little bit about the process for, how to reorganize the requirements and the process for reorganizing school districts. And then, and I will present that information to you. And then Jessica Fork and Laura Wilbur will present the options discussed and the committee recommendations this evening. And before I start, I wanted also to remind the audience here, this was the work plan that was approved by the City Council, what you see before you. And this work plan included fairly specific tasks. And for most part, the Education Committee was able to, to complete these tasks with the exception of a couple, and they will talk about that and the reasons that they were not able to complete those. But it's, one of the first items that we looked at, of course, was the data. And, and the data that John would present to you, as we looked at the data and we had the whole variety of data available on state and local websites. So we ultimately landed on the, what, what we call the California Assessment of Student Performance and Progress. It's a standardized way of looking of the core, the core curriculum for schools in, in our communities and it serves as a tool for educators, for parents, for, for anybody who wanted just to see how our schools are performing compared to the rest of the region or even in, in fact, the whole, the entire state. It's a tremendous, there's tremendous amount of information available on that website. And that's, so most of the data that you will see tonight is from that website that's, is a system that's established by the State Board of Education. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to John Kane, who will go through the data for you this evening.
If I could just interject real quick. You're saying we're going to get obviously different parts of the report from different people and things like that. And sometimes we'll have questions, obviously. Typically, we wait till after things are presented, but I'm guessing with so many different people, instead of maybe having this back and forth, come up and come, if the council desires to have any questions during the presentation, I would encourage them to do so. Yeah, while the presenter's presenting whatever they're presenting.
Thank you.
Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers, good to see you up there. Thank you for your service to our community and thank you for the privilege of serving on the Education Committee. It was my first foray into this kind of thing and I enjoyed it. I don't know if you believe in miracles, but seven members doing a ton of research. I did the math. It's about conservatively 200 hours that we spent researching the stuff that you're about to get. You ready for this? In 10 slides. And I have eight minutes. That's a miracle. So take a look at slide number one. What you have there is the estimated number, and I'm going to use two terms interchangeably throughout my eight minutes and 15 seconds. Or is it eight minutes and 30 now? I'm going to use two terms. One is San Juan School District instead of the long name. Also, school-aged children or K through 12 age children. Okay? We're talking about kids from kindergarten to senior high. 13,029 of them. And if you take a look at that pie chart, 44% or 13,000, I'm sorry, 5,211 of the 13,000 children, K through 12, in our city, go to schools in our city limits. If you look at the blue part of the pie, 37% are enrolled outside San Juan Unified School District and outside of our city limits. And then if you look at the bottom part, that 19% are Citrus Heights students that are enrolled not in our city schools, but in San Juan Unified Schools outside of our city limits. Okay? Slide number one.
Just a question on that. You gave us that number of 5,211 for the 44% without making us do the math. Did you have the numbers by chance of the 37% and 19%?
Yes, 4,000, 4,820. And then the 19% is 2,475. That's rounded up or down? Not by decimal point. Moving on. This is a very interesting slide and it really helps us get a picture of what schools are dealing with in San Juan Unified. And it doesn't show the state, but it's not unlike the state, which you'll see later. Socioeconomically disadvantaged population are students primarily that get a free lunch or a reduced-cost lunch. There might be some other factors, but those were the two factors we looked at. So they go to school and they get a free lunch at school or they get a reduced-cost lunch at school. San Juan Unified School District as a whole, about 54 or 55% of them get free lunch or reduced lunch. Take a look at the schools in our city. 71%, 39%, go right on down the line. You can see we are above, for the most part, all of San Juan Unified. In our city, that percentage of kids that go to school in our schools, in our city limits, that's the percentage.
Do you mean some kids pay for lunch?
They get a free lunch or they get a reduced cost.
But the rest of them pay? Is that how it works? So they have to pay? I didn't know that.
So, that's not correct.
Okay, I can't answer that question. I'm not qualified.
Well, I, I would like to know.
It's all free. The state pays for all students in the state of California to get free lunch.
So my question.
So maybe, okay. I'm sorry, wait a minute. This was the information and, and it's incorrect. So I apologize.
My question would be, how would we call them socioeconomically disadvantaged if the criteria is based on a free lunch when everybody gets a free lunch?
Go ahead, Cyrus.
So just, just a note here that the school district tracks a variety of methods to keep track of the socioeconomically disadvantaged. They have, they have a system and that's where, and free and reduced lunch is one of those, but it's not the only one. So it's a, it's a variety of measures that they have and these are the numbers that we have received from schools.
Would we be able to hear those factors that are used for that determination?
We could.
You're calling it out, so I just wanted to know what it means if you're going to call it out.
That was, that was the understanding I had, but there is a gentleman here that could maybe clarify this later. Dan, do you, Mayor?
Go ahead with your report. Rest of your report, we'll come back to it.
So apologize for that. I briefed this.
We'll add an extra minute on for you.
Please, yeah. Thank you, Cyrus. That was a minute. But we talked about that and that was my understanding. Okay? But, but suffice it to say, they are socioeconomically disadvantaged in probably different ways. Okay? Moving on. These, all these slides here, there's six of them. They can be confusing, but I want to help you with this first slide. So we looked at English reading, English, that criteria of testing, and math. All right? So there's standardized testing for elementary, middle school, high school. Those are all reported on this website that we spent a lot of time on. We went all the way back to 2014 and on the far left of each, California is your far left on that slide, then you have San Juan Unified, and now you have our elementary schools, Arlington Heights, Cambridge, and so on. If you look at those bar graphs, the far left is 2014 to 2015, moving from left to right. Then you have the brown or the orange, 2015 to 2016, and so on. If you look at the bottom of the slide, that's the color code. There's a gap between 2018 and 2019, I'm sorry, 2018, 2019 school year and the 2021, 2022 school year because that was COVID. So there was no standardized testing available as a whole. So there was no standardized testing available as a whole. So if you take a look at Arlington Heights, just to give you an example of what those bars mean, and this is what they'll mean throughout every one of these slides. I'm not going to talk on each slide, but I'm going to give you the example here. You have these slides, probably through an email. Arlington Heights, less than 30% of the children that attend that school read at grade level. That was in 2014 to 2015. In 2018 to 2019, 40% read at grade level or exceeded grade level. See, that's at the top, that titles the slide. You can go through each school. Cambridge Heights, obviously, the stronger school of our elementary schools. And in the most recent year that they tested, 2022 to 2023, 70%, almost 70% of those children read at grade level or above, or exceeded grade level, okay? Then you go to math, or you should go to math, there you go. Same thing, same dates, the bars mean the same thing. Cambridge Heights, 2022 to 2023, almost 70% tested for math or exceeded grade level in 2022 to 2023. And you can just look at each of those, takes a few minutes to process it in your brain, and then you can see exactly where they're at. Now, when you go to the middle schools, again, what we did, it was a kind of a unified decision, was to give you California as a whole, San Juan Unified as a whole. So each of these slides that you have in the PDF file represent Calif, or report California as a whole, San Juan as a whole, and then there's our middle schools. You can look at Kingswood, Lankin, Sylvan, and Woodside. So, in English, in our middle, yes.
Excuse me, John? May I ask a question?
Please.
Just a clarifying question. Did you, and maybe you'll cover this in the rest of your presentation, did you, when you saw consistent growth in any one school, did you ask the school at all, what are your methodologies that got you to increase not only above our school district average, but also the California average? In the math example, Skycrest has had year-over-year growth, even post-pandemic, they had a surge in, and I know there's been...
You want to go to math real quick?
Testing standard changes.
Where's, back here in the elementary? Okay, go ahead.
Yes, it's elementary mathematics.
Right.
So were there any inquiries to the accelerating schools to find out, what did they do differently?
Right. So that was a question that was brought up often, but you only have so much time?
Got it.
Okay? And I'm sure you could do a deeper dive. I mean, if you saw the amount of data that is available, and what you had to do to come up with these slides, and I mean, I'm so thankful for the folks that worked on these slides and consolidated this data for you. But that was a really great question, it was thrown around, and I'm so thankful to have met the principal of San Juan. He says, hey, come on over, have coffee, and I'll find out more about that kind of thing at San Juan. But, no.
Thank you.
Okay? So moving on, that's middle school English, middle school mathematics. So California as a whole, I mean, this is not anything new, if you watch the news, California as a whole, 40% around our state at, so 60%, 60% do not meet grade level math in the state of California in our middle schools. 60%.
Just a question on that, I'm sorry, what?
Yes.
Six, I'm sorry, John, I'm trying to figure out how you're coming up with the 60%.
Okay, so if you take a look at this graph, California, 40% meet or exceed...
Forty from 100.
Math. So 60% what?
I'm sorry, were you calling out California?
If you subtract 40 from 100, right.
Calling out California?
No, I'm just giving you an example, so you can interpret the rest of the graphs.
Okay, go ahead.
Yes.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Because I, what I did was, I tested this on my wife, and she looked, and she's like 10 times smarter than I am. And I told Cyrus, literally, she's 10 times smarter than, and she went, huh? That's what she said. So I'm trying to put it at, you know, my level or my wife's level. Oh, if she's watching. High schools, we have two, Mesa Verde and San Juan. Again, you have all your dates. That's English, that's math. That's not a pretty picture, but that's what it is, okay? I got to move on, because the floor might open up. This final slide, or next to final slide, percent meeting or exceeding standards in English language arts. This was something that the committee members talked about doing, and we did it for you. At the very bottom, you see total population. That is, as best as we can get from various sources, the total number of K through 12 kids in these particular school districts, not cities, but school districts, okay? So Twin Rivers, there's 30 sign. What we tried to do in response to the committee, the council's request, was give you a representative sample. So if you take a look there, total population, that's K through 12 kids in each of these school districts, right? Socioeconomic percentage, take a look at those numbers, 88% in Twin Rivers, 70% in Sac City, 54% in San Juan Unified, and you go across the board, all right? In all of those school districts, meeting or exceeding standards in English language arts, that's the representative sample, who meet or exceed the state's standards for English language arts, as they are tested, okay?
So, I'm just looking at this graph of Riverside, Corona Norco, and Garden Gate have a very high socio-economic percentage...
Yes.
Disadvantaged percentage.
Yes.
But they're scoring much higher than San Juan.
Yes. That's what that says.
Right. Okay.
And then, moving on, mathematics. You have the same school districts representative, the same student population represented, the same socio-economic represented, and you can take a look at the, how they're doing in math. And those, compare those. And I believe the floor will not open, because I'm done. Any other questions?
Questions, comments?
Comment.
Go ahead.
Thank you very much, John, for presenting the information. I think this brings to all of our minds, what can we do to help our students of all ages in the K-12 space raise their language and mathematics scores? So, thank you very much for illuminating our conversation here, appreciate it.
Thank you, John. I think this, just before I move to the next slide, the purpose of these last two slides was to show, as the committee requested, or the committee wanted to look at, some comparable-sized school districts with the same or similar socioeconomic demographics, and have the comparison available for further discussion and evaluation. So at this point, I'd like to spend a few minutes and talk about the process and the requirements to form a new school district. And I have to say, this is a little complex, so please, you know, as Mayor Daniels mentioned, that if you need to interrupt and ask questions, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Cyrus, forgive me, forgive me. I'm going to go actually back to the last presentation for just a moment.
Sure.
I've been trying to figure it out while the talking's going on, and, okay, actually, I just figured it out while I was talking, so nevermind. Thank you, I got it, thank you so much.
Okay. So, so the process, so the process for school district reorganization is really a very prescribed process identified in the, by the education code. Basically, they have a booklet, they call it the handbook, and also section 35500 of the education code. What this section of the code identifies, it identifies the overall process, how to initiate district reorganization, what does it take, and we'll talk about all of these tonight. What are the roles and responsibilities? There are two levels of reviews and approvals that are needed, one at the local level, that is done by the Sacramento County Committee on School District Organization, and then at a state level, that comes from the California Board of Education for the final approval. And then it also identifies the steps and the processes, the timeline, everything is well prescribed. And then they also have what they call the minimum threshold standards that they identify. One thing I want to clarify about my role, my role was, I was brought in to help facilitate a conversation with the education committee, not to have an opinion or not to really try to do the analysis myself. So I just want to reiterate that, my role was really facilitating the discussion, and pointing the members of the committee to the resources available, and guiding the discussions as we went through this process. So, and please feel free to interrupt me if any of these, if you have questions on any of this. So, in California, there are four common types of reorganization. And these are listed here, is territory transfer, formation of new school districts, and I've highlighted this one, because this is the case that the city council is interested in, is unification with components and lapsations. So, I'm not, I don't intend to talk about the other three kinds unless you have specific questions on those. I'll focus my discussion on my presentation tonight, mostly on the second one, is the formation of the new school districts. So, as I said, the education board identifies the formation of the new school districts, and sometimes we use the term, or they use the term, unification, district organization, reorganization of district organizations, or formation of new school districts. So, they're used interchangeably in the education code when you look at it, but it's really about all the same. It refers to, so they call it unification, so that's the same thing, it's creating, which means reorganizing or splitting an existing unified school district into two or more unified school districts, the case that this, the city council is interested to explore. So, this is the definition that we just talked about. And the reason, typically, the reason for this process is to, if the community has some educational, specific educational needs, there's some regional differences that need to be addressed through the process, or there is an interest in promoting local control. And the process is, and we're talking, we're getting a little deeper into the process and what it takes, it is a petition process, it does require community support, and we talked about that, of course, financial viability, and as I said before, approval from both the county and the state. And in this case, I'll mention who the county is. Oops, sorry. So, there are really four ways to initiate a school district reorganization. And they're grouped into two categories. And the reason they're grouped in two categories, because the process is slightly different, not slightly, but it's somewhat different from, for one and two. So we'll talk about the process and how it's different. So, one way is a petition that's submitted by the school district governing board, in this case, the San Juan Unified School District Board, or 25% of voters in the affected area. So, so 25% of the voters, and if the petition is signed, and it's not and, it's either the petition submitted by the governing board or a petition. It's not, you don't have to have both, one of them is sufficient. And then the second, or the second methodology, the second approach, is a petition submitted by a local agency. And that can be a local committee, it could be the county office of education, it could be the city council, county, and, or, once again, it's not and, or 10% of registered voters in the entire school district, entire body of the San Juan school district.
Question, what, in the first choice, what is the affected area? Is that just the city of Citrus Heights?
That's correct, so...
So the rest of the district isn't affected? Okay.
Just to clarify, that's just to begin the petition process, not the approval. We haven't talked about the approval process yet, but to begin the petition process, you could have 25% of the registered voters within city of Citrus Heights, or the school board.
10% of the whole district.
And the other one is 10% of the entire district. So those are the two differences. And I'll say a little bit about what is different about them. What I can tell you, that number two is somewhat more, as you look at the process that the state Board of Education identifies, it's somewhat more complicated than the first one. And so this is what the first approach, the 25% petition, or the district governing board, if this is one of those two methods. And once again, everything I'm saying, it comes directly from the education code. So, basically, the county committee, and let me mention who the county committee is, the county committee is a body appointed by the Sacramento County Office of Education. And at this time, there are seven trustees of the county board of education. So the seven trustees of the board of education are the county committee, what we call, refer to as the county committee. So, within about 30 days, they look at the petition. The petition has also, the education code identifies certain information that needs to be included in the petition, you know, and you can imagine, they want a reason why you want to go down this path, they want to have a map, and this, in your case, this may or may not be contiguous with the city boundary. They don't want, you know, they're not typically interested to create like a little island, so if there is a little tiny island, they would say, include that in your, in your district, in your proposed district that you want to pursue. And then they would set up, schedule a public hearing within 60 days after the petition has been submitted. So the timelines are fairly standard, and they're controlled. Then they would perform what they call a study and analysis of the proposed unification. And there are nine criteria, or nine minimum requirements that they test against. We'll talk about those a little later in the slideshow, but that's their primary way of testing whether this petition will move to the next step or not, because they're looking for compliance with the nine, what they call the nine minimum requirements. And then, of course, within the 120 days, they have to make a recommendation, whether to approve or disapprove the petition. And then they could also, they may, not they don't have to, they may also make a recommendation as far as the area of election. And in your case, it's either the entire city boundary or the entire district. But this is a, the final deciding body is the state board of education, who decides who's going to vote on this, whether it's the, only the city limits, or it's the entire district. But it is possible that the county committee may make a recommendation, but the final authority with the state. And so, before we go to the next step, if the petition is denied by the county, by the office of education, there is also, the code identifies a process to appeal the process to the state. So there is another step that could be initiated in case if that petition is not approved or denied at the beginning. Then the petition is submitted to the state, and then there's a process, you know, the state receives the information from the county and from the petitioner, but they also perform their own independent analysis and review. They also initiate a sequel process, and I'm sure you're familiar, you've heard about the sequel process, that is Environmental Quality Act, and so they had, they look at different aspects of the unification, what it does for the community, and the implications of it. And they also, there are some specific public hearings that are required as part of the process. And then, at the end of that process, the state board of education, based on their own analysis, they either approve or disapprove the petition. Its approval is given, then it's given back to the county office of education, and the superintendent is, will call an election based on the area of election that the state board of education identifies.
Question, Cyrus, so, on the first step, the 30 days, the petition, is there a time limit from when you get signature number one to when you get signature number 25%? Because some of the, you know, for regular initiatives, you have six months, you have so limited period of time to collect names. Is there a time limit for the petitioning?
So, what the, what the state, I'm sorry, what the county office of education looks for is a complete application. So you need, you know, if it comes from the, if it's the governing board of the school district has approved it, that's all they need. But if it's a petition, they need to have, they do the checking, of course, and they have to verify the signatures. Within that 60 days, they have to determine the sufficiency of petition.
No, I'm asking about the petition. So like, if I started... No, I'm asking about the petition. So like, if I started collecting signatures in January, how long do I have the year to get the rest of them, or?
You haven't submitted the petition yet, so there's no timeline. There's no clock to...
People could move, things could change. Okay.
Yeah. Okay. Any questions before I move to the next slide? So, this is the same, this is a copy, I don't intend to go through it, but this is the flow chart that's from, straight from the, from the State Board of Education, and it pretty much describes, or has the process I just described. The second approach is by 10% petition, petition or local agency. And the one thing, you know, steps C and through J are identical with what I just presented on the other process. What's different on this, on this slide are steps A and B. So if you go this route, if it's, the petition is done through 10% of the population, and the, or the local, or the local agency resolution, then the county committee holds a preliminary hearing. And then, they also identify, they also review the application and accept or reject the petition. This, I'm sorry.
Cyrus, quick question here, just for clarity again. In looking at the two processes, you talked about the 25% threshold, and now you're discussing the 10%. Just a question, would we fit under item number two, which says petition submitted by other local agencies, city council, a county committee, or 10% of registered voters in an entire school district? Would that neatly fit into what we're considering at this point, or you're explaining both processes because we have options?
Because you have options. Yeah. Because it's, it's the choice of this council. If you, if the council so desires to move this forward, these are the options. I'm just trying to list the options and what steps are needed.
Thank you.
This is, if a resolution was approved by the council, if the council desired to take this to the next step, you could, the council could do it through a resolution, but you have to comply with these steps. So what's different about this process, as I said, are steps A and B. Steps A and B is a county committee initial public hearing, or preliminary public hearing, and also review. And the County Office of Education does not provide any guidelines as how much time they have to take to review it, what they review. And so, there's really, it's not clear how long that process could take. So that's something to, something that I wanted to point out. The rest of it is identical to what I just shared with the other process. It's just getting to this step of this first, the first two initial steps are somewhat ambiguous, because the County Office of Education is not really provided too much of a guideline on how that is, that is done. And this is the same flow chart that comes from the handbook, from the School District Organization, from the California Department of Education, is what I described. I know it's, I'm packing a lot of information on two slides, I just want to make sure I'm not going too fast. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those. Because I want to talk a little bit about the criteria, and what they call the minimum threshold, and the criteria that both the County Office of Education and the State Board of Education review to determine the sufficiency of the application and the approval or disapproval. So, these are the nine criteria. It's a number of students, of course, community identity, division of property, and we'll talk about those a little bit, making sure that we're not creating a segregated environment, what the cost, the final cost to state, what educational programs are you looking at, or proposing to modify or change, cost of facilities, property values, and I'll talk, I'll talk a little bit about property values, because that is a little confusing, and then the fiscal management. So, number of pupils, a number of students is, you know, the state doesn't want to create super tiny school districts. So, the number of students that they have threshold is about 1,500. They would, they've identified that 1,500 is the minimum for a school, unified school district. There has to be a distinct community entity. And once again, I'm not making a value judgment whether it's, you have, you can do that or not, I'm just saying that, what they look for. And the division of property, that they want to make sure that as you go through this process, there's equitable division of property and facilities between the, between the two districts that are created out of this process. And what could potentially complicate this, if there is like any outstanding bonds that the school district may have, depending on the type of the bond, whether there's a facility response or GO bonds. So there could be a nuance or complexity with that. And we talked about the integrated environment, wanting to make sure that this is not going to promote racial or ethnic segregation or discrimination. Cost to the state, you know, the state typically looks for the cost of the reorg, school district reorganizations to be neutral. They, and they want it to be incidental to the reorganization process, not, not having, creating a major impact on the state funding and state programs. They also want to be sure that the school district that is created has sound educational programs, and how you, how it's proposed for the outcome, for the educational program to change the outcome, based on, based on the application that's presented. And also the facilities cost, the same thing, you know, that they want to make sure that if there is any increase in facilities cost, you know, if you wanted to create a brand new, let's say, the example is, if you wanted to create a new school district, but you didn't have a high school, and you said, we need to spend $100 million to build a high school, then that could be an issue, that could be a problem, that with the facilities that you have, at least the backbone, and the basic infrastructure to do it. And then also, they, and I, they want to make sure that your purpose is not to increase the property values, to say, well, we want to have, you know, group some of the good schools together so the property values can increase. And then, and then what they also look at is, they want to look at, they would look at as part of this process, to make sure that the post-reorganization, the fiscal management is sound, and that the new school districts created out of this process will be financially solvent. So, so that's, those are the nine different criteria that, an independent review, I just have to repeat that, that this is while the information presented from the petitioner, or the County Office of Education could inform the state process, state will do their own evaluation analysis of all of these nine criteria. And the same thing with County Office of Education, that they may rely, or they may look at some of the data that you present, or the petitioners present, but they will not rely on those, they will do their own independent analysis and evaluation. And I want to end with this slide, because what the state and the language that they use, and that gives both the County Office of Education and the State Board of Education a level of discretion, they use the term substantially met. So there is a level of discretion that goes into it, and this is, this basically, you know, so there's no hard and fast rules to say, you know, if you had, if you met this specific guideline, the state would approve it. There is a level of discretion in their way of approving, approving or disapproving the proposed reorganization. They have a level of judgment and discretion in that process. I'm sorry, I packed a lot of information in few slides, but I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have, counsel.
Okay. So, the process is going to be, I have, I think, 10 or 11 public comment sheets. But before we go to those, are there any preliminary questions or comments for the speaker?
I think we have a little bit more information.
We've got more presentations. Here's more.
Okay. Nothing for him, though, right?
No.
Okay.
Okay. So with that, I will ask Jessica and Laura to present the recommendations and findings from the, from the Education Committee.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and fellow council members. We are here to share the discussions and observations that we had during this process. I'm going to apologize ahead of time for anybody who's following bullet-wise. As we were discussing, there are a couple of bullets that we feel like we may group together, so I'm going to do my best to let you know which ones we're addressing together. So, first and foremost, we did discuss the challenging socioeconomic conditions, concerns regarding the challenges impacting the students and families within our community specifically. And with that, we wanted to talk about the positive, sorry, the parent involvement and engagement that goes with that. Sorry, I'm also just checking our notes here, too. So, item one and item three, I'm going to kind of put together. So, when we were discussing as a group what those socioeconomic conditions might be that impact our specific community, some of the things that we talked about that go along with that is the ability to have parent involvement within our schools, and just recognizing whether that is something that a new district would change for our families, or whether that's something that we could rally together as a community to better together in that way. So there were concerns for us about the level of parent involvement already seen, as our lovely community members shared earlier, that that's their goal as well. So it was really great timing. With that, we discussed that our goal, and you'll get into the further recommendations, is to look at ways that we can get our families more engaged. So, the second one, so second bullet here is overall performance. And I think that goes really well with positive development, so that, these are the two that I'm grouping together here. So, one of the questions that you had, councilmember Taff, about whether we had engaged the schools in discussion around the trends that we saw, so it was a really great question. And as John had mentioned, we did bring that up a few times and explored ways that we could do that, and we were encouraged not to. So, we were told to leave the schools out of it, and I just wanted to address that. So, we weren't able to get into that as much as we would like to. That being said, the overall performance, it is obvious, as we looked at the data earlier, and let me tell you, we were very steeped in lots of data and trying to figure out what exactly was relevant to this discussion. And with that, we did look at the schools' scores, we also looked at their socioeconomic status, we looked at graduation rates, we looked at attendance rates. That one was a little bit harder to pin down, but I just want to give the overall impression of how much we really looked at through this lens. And with that, as you saw on the data that John shared earlier, a lot of our schools are really on par with our district, and with California as a whole. So that, again, brought to us the discussion of, this isn't maybe the district issue, but this is something that us as a community, what can we look into? And those were some of the discussions that we had. And I think that's it for me on the first four.
Okay. And then, also, councilmember Taff, like, brought up how you're meeting quarterly with San Juan Unified, which was actually really good, because that kind of goes into that new leadership of San Juan District, and how we were looking at ways that we can maybe partner more with them, and asking what San Juan could use from us and our schools in our area. Like, how could we help support the Citrus Heights schools? So like, the elementary in the middle, and the K through eight, as well as the two high schools. And then also, for the budgetary and resource needs, we did not have adequate resources or expertise to actually look at the numbers that way, so we couldn't do anything with the actual budget and resource needs for that part. Any questions on that?
Any questions? Just, Jane, just real quick, on the challenging socioeconomic conditions, what conditions did you identify that met that phrase? What is it that was presented that allowed you to get to a decision that there are challenging socioeconomic conditions?
When we looked at surrounding districts like Roseville and Rockland, we have a significant low socioeconomic development, like, group compared to those more affluent communities. So, we were 58, some odd, like, percent, I think, of low socioeconomic compared to Roseville and Rockland. So we're saying, we have a much different demographics here than we did in those two areas.
I would agree with that heartily. But Citrus Heights has a median household income of $65,000. I don't consider that to be poor, if you want to use that term, too. So, I'm just trying to get at the point of this, because...
Roseville has 140, is their median socioeconomic.
Absolutely. But, so they're great. We're talking about Citrus Heights, and we're talking about this...
I know, and I'm comparing a similar situation.
So, I'm just saying, you didn't say that it was compared to, you say you have concerns regarding the socioeconomic challenges. So, I'm just pointing out that this is not a poor community. This is not a poor city. This is not a city that people aren't involved. You know, I've put four kids now, my fourth kid now, into the, through the district, and there's a lot of parental involvement. You could always have more, no doubt about it, it would always be better to have more. But I don't know that this is something that, it sounds to me as if it was just accepted, that it's a, there's a socioeconomic challenge here. And I'm not hearing evidence of that. I'm not hearing that, you know, we found that, you know, families were only making $20,000 a year, and because of that, they won't work with their kids.
Well, if you look at bullet number six, we didn't get resources, we weren't given budgetary resources from...
If I may, Mayor, just for this question, since you knew what Citrus Heights median, Roseville median, did we get an average median for the whole district by chance, in California, since we're using California and San Juan Unified?
No, that is not, because I teach in Roseville.
We also were really encouraged to not look at too much...
Mike?
Yeah, sorry. We were also encouraged to really focus on Citrus Heights solely when it came to things that would be comparative in that nature. So it was really hard to have more robust discussions around what that looks like in comparison to like, our other neighboring Sacramento County areas. And, for example, we didn't get to talk about, sorry, were you tapping for me?
Oh, no, no, no.
Okay. For example, we weren't able to compare a lot with the other San Juan Unified schools. So I think that that's important to also note. But when we were looking at the SES component, or socioeconomic status, within the schools of Citrus Heights, it was also noticeable that the schools that were performing better, sometimes also had better resources or community engagement allowed to them, such as, when we talk about Woodside and Chase, and I've heard a lot of people talk about all of that, there's a lot of community involvement with that school and what they're doing, which is fantastic. But that's not the case for all of our schools.
Councilmember...
So, did you look at any other communities or districts that are, if you said, okay, here's the socioeconomic situation with Citrus Heights schools, and you said, okay, this is the number that I have for that, whatever it is, whatever the average is, was it 70% or something? And you said, okay, what other districts are operating at 70% at that?
Do you want to go back to the slide for a while, your...
Not really.
Oh, okay.
Not that is. So, but my point is, is that if we accept that we have this socioeconomic disadvantage, what other districts or schools are operating at that same economic disadvantage, and how are they performing?
Can I jump in?
Sure, absolutely.
That was my slide?
Yep.
Come on, please.
Come on over, let's go back. Yeah.
So, very quickly, when you start diving into that information, you need a nap, okay? Because it is very complicated. We did look, as a cursory, as she said, we only had so many hours, right, only so many meetings, but we looked at equivalent, and there they are. And we also, some of us, went and looked at those test scores in those cities. In fact, we had a slide at one point where we discussed, where we saw the math and the English standards for some of these other districts. And by and large, I don't have the slide. You know, maybe we can get it to them if they ask for it later. That was kind of a summary of that information. It's very challenging to interpret it and come to any conclusions.
And I get that. And believe me, I have spent probably 200 hours looking at this kind of data.
Yep.
Okay?
You know what I'm talking about.
I know what you're talking about.
Yeah, we looked at Salo Alto, we looked at Irvine.
What I found was, is a socioeconomic percentage is not particularly relevant to the school's performance. I can find schools that have much greater... I can find schools that have much greater socioeconomic disadvantage than Citrus Heights does, but they're performing above the state average. I'll be happy to provide a list of schools that are performing above the state average that have a higher socioeconomic disadvantage.
There's a school like that in, down in Modesto, yeah.
So, so, thank you. So I'm not sure that I really buy into the socioeconomic, and this is not new. This is, the socioeconomic disadvantage in Citrus Heights has been that way for 30 years or more. And I think some districts have decided, okay, well, this is what we have to cope with, and they've kind of developed a strategy to meet the needs and the standards of the students, because ultimately, that's what we're talking about. We're talking about students and families not continuing in that same socioeconomic disadvantage because they're not getting the education. They're accepting that we're performing at 40% of grade level. And that's the lot in life. We don't have a class system in this state or in this country, but essentially, we do. By default, this is what we're faced with. The schools that are underperforming, we sort of accept that, and those same residents run into that same cycle. We've got to figure out a way to break the cycle here. And I don't know what the answer is. And I did have a question. So, and I was intrigued by your, what you talked about, parent involvement engagement. Did you talk about, were there suggestions that said, hey, look, how do we get better engagement? What are the methodologies that we need, we go to achieve that? Because maybe the existing district can take advantage of those ideas. And this is, again, when we talk about this, I think that this exercise we're doing, we're going through, is an excellent learning opportunity for the district as well. All I'm interested in is performing better so that we get out of this cycle of, well, you know, we're socioeconomically disadvantaged, so we're just going to stay there, and that's our lot in life. We don't want to take that attitude. We have to take, we have to take a bigger picture, look at this and say, okay, what are the ideas? What are the ideas that we can do? What would, even if we chose to form our own school district, what would we do different than this district is doing now? That's the question. And that's, hopefully, that would be something that we could talk about and say, all right, well, let's figure this out. Let's all work together. I don't really have anything against the existing district. All I'm saying is, it's got to be something better than this.
Good, that leads us to this.
What's that?
It leads us to the recommendations.
We're not ready for that yet, actually.
Yeah, I know.
I'm getting off my soapbox here.
I have a question.
Jane's next.
Thank you. And again, we have to remember, fellow council members, that this is the committee's discussions and observations. There are six of them, not one. And I do want to ask, what were your input data for point number three on the parent involvement and engagement? Did you take a cursory look by chance? And this is truly a question, if there are any PTO, PTA, formal groups at each school, because oftentimes on their websites, that's easily discoverable. Was that assessment figured out at that point?
So when we were collecting our data, we did look at the different opportunities that schools had listed, again, whatever was on the website, which they also happened with timing to be rebranding all of that, so I think that's important to note. And we were, again, encouraged to not call the schools and bother them. So we were only limited to what we could find online or what we knew within, we did try to parcel it out to the neighborhoods and schools that we all live in so that it would, we could know a little bit more from the pulse on the ground. But with that in mind, that particular item wasn't necessarily related to data as much as it is to the discussions and observations we had. So I just want to clarify that this slide is more just kind of giving you guys an overview of what our process and our discussions were through these months together. I hope that clarifies.
Forgive me, but if you say it's a discussion of the observations, what are you observing, then? You didn't go to the schools. You didn't talk to the PTAs. You didn't, you know, they discourage that. So how could you observe what kind of parental involvement was there if there was no reach into that area?
Right. Pardon me for using, I was just referring to the title on this slide, but that doesn't necessarily mean that every single bullet was a direct observation. It was more of a discussion that we had on things that could support our families in doing better, so just recognizing that that is something that we need. If they exist already, that's wonderful. If they don't, it's something that we just identified could be really beneficial for our schools to get engagement. And we also talked a lot about what makes it difficult for families. So while $65,000 sounds like a really great number, I don't know that it goes very far for our families with children. And so with that, we talked a lot about how families, what the hurdles might be for some of our families in relation to childcare, after-school care, what our schools currently offer and don't offer. And so that was, again, not necessarily data or observations, but part of the discussions we had of what hurdles we foresee being an issue now and would need to be addressed in a new district as well.
Okay, thank you. Jane, were you done?
I have a question.
Vice Mayor.
There's a lot of information you're presenting. Did I hear you say that you were not allowed to have the attendance records?
No, I was just saying that the attendance records aren't as clear and obvious as you might think they are. So when it got into like, what, looking at attendance rates versus absenteeism and things like that, it was something that we determined because of how it gets defined, it wasn't particularly helpful in the data that we were looking at.
If I, when I talk to one of the principals, if he says on any given day, 14% of the students aren't in school, wouldn't you think that if you're not in school, you're not learning anything?
Absolutely.
And you're the guy making that graph go down?
Right, but the reasons why they're absent, we don't know what those are. So for us to be able to say like, oh, little Johnny skips school 15% of the time, we don't know who those kids are, we just know the overall number of absentees. So that's why we were saying the absentee stuff didn't help us as much as some of the other data.
It's too bad they wouldn't let you work with the schools.
I also just want to note, with COVID, it also became a bigger issue with kids being allowed in school, not in school, and again, like their ability to partake. So that was another piece that we decided it wasn't super relevant to what we were doing in the moment.
Question on the positive developments. So you've indicated several schools in Citrus Heights show positive progress and improvement. And I will give you that there are some of the graphs, points in the graph that show a school going up or whatever. But I'm wondering, do we consider that to be positive necessarily when that score is still, you know, in the 30% range? It's like saying, things were really bad, and some people are getting up to mediocre, so that's great.
We are using Skycrest Elementary in particular as one of the schools...
No, I'm not losing them at all. I'm looking at...
No, I'm saying the positive part.
Oh, you looked at, for the one school, then?
We are looking at how Skycrest was, has a high SED population. However, they're outperforming some of the others, like high-ish SED population. So we, one of our conversations was like, we would have liked to have talked to Skycrest to find out what they're doing to like help that improvement, because it's actually, in all honesty, really phenomenal, like what they seem like they're doing there. And it would have been really nice to have that conversation about what is going on. So that's one of those ones where we're saying, like, some of those schools, they are showing, that's why we're saying, could we talk to Skycrest and find out what they're doing? Is that something that would be helpful for the other schools, like elementary schools in particular that are showing lower success rates?
I thought you had a guy from San Juan on coming to the meetings and helping you facilitate...
He's right there.
Meeting.
All right, well, shame on you.
Yeah, and then I wanted to comment on your...
Can I, sorry?
Sure, go ahead.
Can I just speak to that as well? So I just want to clarify that in terms of Dan here, as we pointed him out, he was there as a member of the public, so it wasn't as if Dan was there presenting constantly or, and it was very helpful if we had a pointed question, but it was a need of, if we needed data or we wanted information, Dan was so great at getting that information and bringing it to the next meeting. But again, I don't know that being able to answer all of Skycrest's philosophical changes would have been in his boat.
But he could have facilitated one or two committee members to meet with the principal of the school and...
We were told, we were told when we started this committee, part of our directive was that we shouldn't be bothering the schools, so I'm just going to reiterate that, which was not from the school district.
Okay, and I'm going to go back to this positive developments. And would it be fair to say that nearly every school in the district is below San Juan and California standards or scoring?
For most of it.
No.
Cambridge, Cambridge Heights is above.
Cambridge Heights.
Yeah, Cambridge Heights is above.
So one out of the 12.
And Cambridge Heights also has a lower SED population. They have like, and then Skycrest, like I said.
And can you, can you kind of enumerate what the difference between Cambridge Heights is and the rest of the district? You know what the difference is to that school?
With Cambridge Heights and how it's set up?
It's an open enrollment school.
I live by Skycrest.
I have friends that actually bring their kids to Cambridge Heights from Fair Oaks and from lots of other communities, not Citrus Heights only, so.
Well, I'm just saying...
It's a well-sought after school. Lots of people want to enroll their kids. I understand there's a waiting list, or there was. I don't know if there still is, but it's a very, very highly regarded school, which is kudos to the district on that. But those are, a lot of those kids that attend those school, that school are not Citrus Heights residents, so.
Then I wanted to actually discuss a little bit about the new leadership in San Juan District. I'm very pleased with the new superintendent. I think she's wonderful, or she's back there somewhere. And then you pointed out the two-by-twos for the council and stuff like that. I just want to point out that there's been new leadership in the district at least, I think, four times that I can remember off the top of my head since my children started going to the schools in San Juan District. The current board, I believe, is all new within the last 10 years, I think, so it's pretty fresh. We went to a by-district process during the previous election and expanded the board, and I think that's a good thing. But in the process, we went to a, one board member out of seven in Citrus Heights. So even though we have, I wrote this down, I hope I got it, even though we have 27% of the kids in the district, we only have 14% representation. Also, we've been doing those two-by-twos for the most part for decades. We've been meeting with the school district literally for decades. And so it's not like it's a new communication thing. It's not meant to be a slant on the board members that are there now. I love some of these new ones that have come along in the last two years especially, absolutely. Again, I think the superintendent is going to do a great job. It's not the issue. The issue is, we've been through that already. We've done that. We've rotated that. And so I don't know that that is necessarily going to make a difference this time, because I've kind of heard that story before, is how I'll put it. But I just wanted to make sure it was understood that we've been meeting with the school district forever. And then I'm really kind of unhappy to hear you say that you didn't have any adequate resources to perform an analysis on the budget and resource side. One thing I think people need to understand is that, and the number was, 13,029 school-aged children live in Citrus Heights. And there's all kinds of numbers you can throw around, but if I was to use what I have found as the per pupil spending in California on a student of $20,000, if every kid in Citrus Heights went to school in Citrus Heights, we'd be looking at about a $260 million budget. So I think that's plenty of money to run a district, I guess, is the way. And I'm just kind of not fully understanding why there wasn't a dive into the budget part of it, because that's part of the analysis of, can you do it? Can you afford it? Is there money to do it?
We were told by some council members that it wasn't our business. And that the numbers weren't for us to deal with.
Hold on, no, John, hold on, hold on. If Cyrus wants to address it, that's fine.
Counsel, just a few things that I need to clarify. I think the statement that the committee members were encouraged not to talk to the school district may be a misunderstanding. In fact, I think the committee members were encouraged to, you know, to do, use whatever means they have to receive the information. And I know some members were able to contact the school district. We had questions about extracurricular activities, some other activities. So I'm sorry if there has been that misunderstanding. I'm not sure if that was ever brought up in the committee discussions. Also, related to the whole process here, you know, we were, you know, for the committee members, and once again, this was a task that was given to the committee, for the committee members to be able to take a deep dive into the financial data, they, of course, you need to go, you know, if you look at the school budget document, it's a very, very thick document. And the school district, you know, to their credit, and Daniel Thickein attended all of our meetings and all of our discussions, they did provide the resources. But they were also going through some transition. You know, their CFO left at the time, they were going through the transition with the new CFO. And so some of the information, you know, for them, for the committee members, they just felt like they didn't have the expertise to do that level of financial analysis. Because when you look at the criteria that's established by the state and the county office of education, it's just not about, you know, what's your budget? They want to know, what are the obligations, what implications the district reorganization would have? You know, it comes to cost of facilities coming to it, the breakdown of the facilities, potential bond obligations. And I think that's where the committee, in fairness to them, they felt like we just don't have the resources, the ability and the expertise to do that level of work. So I want to acknowledge that.
Thank you, thank you, Cyrus. Are you guys, are the ladies done?
No.
You have the next seat, the next slide?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions regarding this slide?
Let's get him.
Okay, let's go ahead and continue.
So the recommendations that came out of the conversations, and we gave you the numbers of the people who, so like five out of seven of us recommended the first two bullets, which is to help like continue to pursue the collaboration and partnership opportunities with San Juan. So some of those things could be things like, could we offer after school tutoring centers? Could we help them provide certain services at these schools that maybe they don't necessarily have the resources for? Or is there a way we could do something like that with them? So we're coming like, if we could pursue those partnerships with them. And with new leadership, sometimes you do have new opportunities, as we all know, so maybe that is something we could talk about with them. And then also, how to help continuing foster positive community engagement and family support involvement in schools. So like, how could we help, like, I know that there's like ELAC meetings and things like that, and like, is there other things that we could help provide or like partner with to help engage like community members with the schools? I like this Robles, and they're talking about how they're doing like the gardens with like the school, and they're like inviting people. I thought that was amazing. I love that idea, so I thought that was really cool.
On the other side of that, we also had two of our seven committee members who recommended conducting further evaluation on the formation of a new school district, including a comprehensive financial analysis. And then the last recommendation that we discussed as a committee was to explore the option for further public charter school options, also within our community, to provide additional choices for our families and students. Any questions about that? I think we got into a lot of this inadvertently on the other slide, so.
And so on the public charter school option, what would be the point of exploring that? What would be the point of, you're talking about creating one charter school in the district, is that what that's saying?
To be honest, we didn't get into a deep dive of a discussion about this. We were just exploring and discussing additional options that could support our Citrus Heights families. So when we talk about that large number of individuals who are going outside of our schools and school district, trying to consider maybe what they're looking for, because a new district wouldn't necessarily just automatically bring them in, but maybe what they're looking for. Does that make sense?
Sure. And I think you're thinking is a charter school type approach might help that.
Could be, could be an additional option to consider, yeah.
Well, it makes me kind of wonder, what would a school district of charter schools encourage people to do then, too? So maybe that's something to ponder. Any questions?
I have a comment.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you so much for your recommendations. I think going back to the discussions and observations, pairing recommendations, because as I heard from my colleagues here, the challenging socioeconomic conditions are questionable and have been unchanging for the last 25 years, at least from our understanding. Overall performance in the schools, and I'm just... Overall performance in the schools, and I'm just going to go point by point, because I wanna, I wanna show history and where we are today. Overall performance, we are, have been historically below our average, and that looks consistent with a couple outstanding schools, which has always performed the way they've performed. I think your middle point, number three, parent involvement and engagement seems to be the only factor that we can actually affect. And it sounds like in the areas or the schools that are outperforming, this is the biggest factor. Positive developments, this is kind of a fuzzy point, because, you know, what do we consider positive? What do you consider development, et cetera? New leadership, again, as was pointed out by the mayor, we've had new leadership before. And so that is an unchanging factor. And finally, budgetary and resource needs, that's one that can be defined if given time and expertise. And so again, as a community, I want to point out the fact that point number three on your observations is the only one that we can strongly influence in our community today, whether or not a school district, because here's, here's my greatest concern. If we were to undertake a very long process that's very expensive, and we do not have parent involvement, will it fall in the same general area of achievement that we have right now? Or if we as a community simply say we are going to engage our parents and schools in a different and exciting and meaningful way, can we, without undertaking an onerous process, engage positive uplift in our schools and our student education? And that's my comment.
Thank you very much. Anything else for the ladies? No, push forward.
Okay, noticeably, I've been pretty quiet, because I've been just listening and really trying to understand this. The, and just, Mary Jane went through all the points here. We have no real clear understanding outside of, for SCD, outside of ESL and free and reduced lunch, what those other impacts are, right? What those other things are that qualify those students in that, in that demographic. We didn't have, we didn't have any way to go and dive into the budget to understand how that money is being spent, where it's being, you know, what is Skycrest using their money for this, giving them such better results? Attendance, we couldn't even, we couldn't even find a way to agree upon what attendance is, and I get it, because sometimes, you know, children are ill, they're exceedingly sick, it, it doesn't account as absenteeism, they're not well. Parent involvement. I can speak to this, because my husband is the past president of Kiwanis. Those gardens that you're talking about, that's my husband out there Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, working with those kids. And I've seen how that program itself has grown to working with just him and his tools from his, from his shed, to engaging with community organizations who are out there helping to do this work. And not only that, with the students, it went from just being key club members and avid kids, you know, who are high achieving students, to our students who are special needs are involved. And then they also went from Mesa over to Carriage Elementary, right next door, and brought in the special education children there to help them to have their own little plot where they can learn about growing things. We know that the best way for us to uplift our community and to increase education is gonna be that parental involvement piece. There, outside of that, there's not, like Mary Jane said, there's not much else we can control. And I looked at the, the recommendation or the thought of a public charter. And all we're doing is being, we're gonna allow for students to get shuffled, higher performing students are gonna get shuffled into those public charters, which means that the students who are still there in these low-performing schools are still not getting the resources and the education that they need. So a public charter is not gonna solve the problem. We really need to dig a little deeper, I think. I, I just, I don't, I don't know. I think it is parental involvement. I don't know why parents aren't engaged. I know my husband and I, we were super, super engaged, but I mean, we came from a large family. Our parents were engaged, but we also recognize that, you know, about 60% of our kids are English as a second, as a second language. The, the number of kids in our district that speak Ukrainian or Russian is huge, and we don't have enough teachers to teach in those languages to get them up to speed to learn in English, right? That, that's, this is a really big problem.
That's what I just told Brett.
Oh, good. Sorry, I started to comment. Sorry, that's it.
You hit it. Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, counsel. I just wanted to make a couple of closing remarks and be available for any questions that you may have. Since the question was asked about the definition of the socioeconomic disadvantage, there is a criteria and there is a definition that's uniform statewide. And if, if the council is interested, Daniel Thickein from the school district is here, and he can probably explain that in 30 seconds, is that something you would like to hear?
Yes. We'll bring Daniel up, but don't go yet.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
I still wanna make you go back and forth.
Sure.
So I wanted to go back to the work plan.
Mayor, could you just turn on your microphone, please?
I wanted to go back to the work plan. And if, can you bring that up, Amy?
Sure.
Page two or one, whatever.
Sorry.
Getting close. That one. Under number one, it was asked to have athletic and extracurricular activities looked at. Did we not do that?
Yes, I, the, the committee, it was not as easy to get that information, and the committee did ask the question. They, in fact, some members of the committee started calling and asking some of the principals in, in different schools to get that information. And Daniel volunteered, Daniel Thickein volunteered to make that contact with the school district and provided us with a data sheet related to extracurricular activities. So it's not, it was not included in the presentation, as the committee discussed what high-level items they wanted to present, but that information is available and we'd be happy to send that to the, to the council.
Well, I, I gotta say, I really would want to see that, because that was called out as, as important. And I'm just gonna share a few things then, that I, to show why I feel it's important. I went to San Juan High School. And in Citrus Heights, we have two high schools, Mesa Verde and San Juan. Between those two schools, my understanding is there's about 1,000 kids in those two schools. We have about 85,000 people that live in the city. Folsom has about 85,000 people that live in their city. In their two high schools, there's about 4,500 kids that go to those two high schools. So I don't know, I don't understand why we're bleeding out, but it results in things like the decimation of athletic programs and stuff like that. Mesa Verde's football team went four and seven last year. San Juan's went one and nine, and they lost by an average of 50 to 10. Mesa Verde's basketball team went five and 21. San Juan's basketball team went 0 and 20, losing by a 70 to 41 margin, margin, including a game where they lost 108 to 6. They're not playing powerhouses. They're playing, you know, people in their own division. There's no freshman or JV football team at San Juan High School. This is what I've been told. I'm not exactly sure about Mesa Verde. I reached out, I didn't get a response back. So the point is, and then I'll mention Casarola, it's Orangeville with 35,000 people, less than half of Citrus Heights, but somehow they have 1,100 students, and they went to playoffs in football and basketball. So my thought is, how many kids are leaving Citrus Heights just for athletics alone? Which is horrible, just horrible. And that then decimating the opportunity for other kids that can't maybe leave and/or want to stay with their home schools, but be slaughtered in athletics. So it, it's a big deal. It's a big deal. Athletics was a big deal to me in, in, in high school. And I would also wanted to know if there's anything being done at our junior high levels, our grade school levels and stuff like that, so I would have liked to have seen that information. But maybe if we do something in the future, we'll see that then. Anything for Cyrus while he's right here? And then I guess we're gonna have Daniel come up and give us the explanation.
If, if that's the council's wish.
Absolutely, that would be wonderful. Thank you.
Good evening. Cyrus said 30 seconds, so I'll try to keep it even shorter. The state defines economically disadvantaged percentage as students that would qualify for free and reduced-priced meals. In practice, every student in California gets a free meal, because we have universal free meals in California. The state provides a reimbursement for that. So how do we track income levels? Our council members, our people in the audience who probably have kids in our schools, know that we ask for a form every year, an income verification form, and that determines our funding levels based off of our poverty levels. Any other questions?
So basically, it's an income thing?
Correct.
Thank you, okay. Thank you, Daniel.
And we should encourage all parents to fill that form out. We fill that out every year.
Okay. Any other questions or comments at this point, before I open it up to public comment? All right. So I have about 10 or 11. You're entitled to five minutes. You don't have to take five minutes, but feel free to if you want to. We wanna hear from you. First up will be Albert Fox.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Members of the committee, thank you. Tough job, been there, done that. Know what you went through, know how hard it is. You've done a great job, thank you. No matter what the outcome is, your work speaks for the community as a whole. We appreciate it. First of all, I think one of the things that became relative right off the bat, and this changes my notes, but it appears at some place in all of this, a direction from council put self-imposed limitations on what staff and the committee were going to see. Whether that's true or not is not the point. What is true is that's the appearance. And that's the appearance from the questions you were asking. How do you handle 4,800 student families who are already going outside the school district to some other district for their education? Finding the cost versus the results is not an easy job, but it can be done, and I think the committee did a good job of that. This is a problem even for high schools like Folsom and Cordova, who are battling right now whether or not they wanna split. And a lot of that is, that question up there, you kept talking about socioeconomic levels, a lot of that battle is over that particular question, and they will continue to have that fight. The pandemic induced performance level problems. I keep hearing statements about, let's go back when. When, when that was is not important. What is important is where we come since the pandemic, because that's what's involved in the decline of the performance of our students in our schools today. It impacts their attendance, their concentration, their learning level, and the results we see on testing. We now have what we sought for 20 years at San Juan Unified School District. We have a board that is representative of our community. Former member Miller left this council, became our first elected member to that board, and he set a standard in a very short period of time. We have some very progressive, thought-provoking supervisors and managers and executive staff at San Juan. Now, I know, because in the last four and a half, five years, I've dealt with every campus in this city on a regular basis for either Heights Church or Rotary. And I've talked to the students. I see the parents. I see what's going on. I talk with the teachers and the principals. Innovative schools, brand-new program, top of the dollar, top-line idea over at Woodside right now. If you haven't seen it, go take a look. Get a presentation of what's going on there. If you wanna see why Woodside is so high in the numbers, innovative school has driven the students to new thought processes, new desires, new wants of what they wanna see in their education. We have 500 students who choose to go outside to other high schools, in either this district or to Roseville. And they do it for all variety of reasons. They wanna play on a certain team, they wanna do certain things, they wanna do a, a specific program of, of some sort. But that's what they do. Consider a stronger, I, I put in here, consider a stronger staff collaboration with the district, and I know we've been doing that forever, but let's go with a real positive thought model of what we wanna do. Consider supporting and working with a public charter school. Somebody said, what do we need one for? I'll tell you one of the big reasons. When you have high-performing students who need a challenge, but who are not involved in sports, they're not involved in a lot of extracurricular things that may be offered, but they still need a challenge. Public charter schools do that. And what I would like to see you do, instead of saying, no, we don't need one, is how about somebody from here, with conjunction with the city manager's office, let's climb onboard and let's start talking to the diocese, the Catholic diocese, to Bishop Soto, about opening up a school that they have at Holy Family. And let's let a charter school come in there and help bring some of these students back into Citrus Heights. If you wanna do something constructive, let's take a look at that, because that's an important factor of what we can do for the students. As far as I'm concerned, everything we should be doing here tonight and from the future is about the students. I don't care what happened 15 years ago. I don't care what happened 10 years ago. What I care about is what happens tomorrow. And I think we have an opportunity to impact that. And I think if, as a group as a whole, you as a council, me as a member of the community, everybody else sitting here, if we don't get off our duffs and start doing something, we're not gonna change this. And I'm gonna take a couple extra seconds, or you can throw me out. I think what I would like to see most, and what I appreciate what the committee did up here, is they touched right on, if I could see the very last slide for a moment, and then I'll, I will stop. Which one was it? Foster positive community engagement, support family involvement in schools, that's gonna be one of the toughest nuts to crack, because we have so many families. We have 15,000 apartment doors in this house. Two parents working, they don't show up for meetings, they're not even able to. You have to figure out some way to get involvement from a different level, and it's gonna take all of us to do that. But I think that's gonna be one of the important ones, if we can get to that point. And with that, thank you. I apologize for going over time.
I'll just clarify.
I'm sorry, but you can't ask questions.
I can ask questions. You said that 500 high school kids leave the city?
Yeah.
So on this form, I show that
No, no.
3,800 attend, excuse me, there's 3,800 high school-aged kids in Citrus Heights. And it's probably somewhere in the figure of 1,000 to 1,500.
It is, it is. But about 500 of them go for just special programs, from what I've been told.
In addition to the others that leave?
No, no, no. That's included in those that are leaving. About 500 of those go for specific programs, athletics, arts, music, whatever it is.
Okay.
You know, they go for those things. We don't have the draw here. If you don't have the students who attend those programs, you're not gonna have the program. It's, you know, very simple. We're just now getting back to the basics of
A total of 2,200 leave, at least.
Yeah, absolutely. I agree.
500 leave for a specific reason.
Oh, absolutely. And if we start our own district, how are you gonna keep them here? Because all they're gonna do is tell you no, we'll go someplace else anyway. That's, that's the problem. It's a, it's a catch 22 fours.
Thank you.
And I hope we see that.
Thank you.
And one, one, one quick comment. Al, I would beg you to look at Woodside again, 'cause they're below 40% in math and English.
But they are one of the highest, and they are growing, and it is improving.
Okay.
They're making efforts.
All right.
You, you have to give credit where it is. You're talking about stats right now that are based upon a COVID pandemic-driven decline.
This is 2324.
No, okay, but what I'm saying is today's
This is not COVID. This is 2324. This is right here. Right in front of me.
I, I'm not gonna, I won't discuss that one with you until you understand the impact COVID had. It's gonna be a five-year program for us to get over. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up is Beth Wall.
Hello, Mayor and City Council and friends. I am the principal at Woodside Innovative School TK through eight, and it's my honor to be here tonight to speak on behalf of our amazing little gem over in Citrus Heights. So I just wanted to highlight a few of the things that are going on right now at our school. The innovation is done through engagement with our students and our families, and honestly, our community partners. And the innovation is taking a problem, which we're seeing a lot of problems tonight going on in our schools, and then tapping into the students, parents, and community partners to seek solutions. And so already this year, the district has provided every classroom in our campus with And so already this year, the district has provided every classroom in our campus with 80-inch smart boards, which are state-of-the-art technology pieces that are very highly engaging. The kids are loving the technology, as are the teachers. We have an entire design team that is working on prototyping because that's how we figure out what's going to work versus what's just a great idea that we can't follow through with, and it's looking like we're heading into the realm of community gardens. Ideally, big thinking would be some chicken coops and figuring out how to have a little farmer's market, but that might be down the road. But a couple of our community partners that I want to highlight as we're going through this process is Heights Church has been a huge support. Bronson, who's the youth pastor, is coming out and doing a three-day service project over spring break with 20 youth, which is going to just improve the look of our school. We have been partnering with the Rotary. Chason has been absolutely amazing working with. When I, when I look in this room, I started in Citrus Heights four years ago at Lycan. I was there for four years and then applied for the position at the Innovative School. And I really do think that the partnership between San Juan and our Citrus Heights community is something very, very special. I can tell you, if it weren't for the community partners, including Ben, who's come over and helped us with some of our thinking around our garden beds, and the Kiwanis have been phenomenal, we wouldn't be able to do what we're doing, and we're really on to some great things. I promise you that. The statistics may look how they do right now. There's, there's no denying that, but we are, this is the first year that we're feeling an upswing from where we've been. This is the first year we just started an attendance academy where we're diving in really strategically and specific with our students. I have a student, he was the most chronically absent student in the entire school, and since starting the attendance academy three weeks ago, which is basically his point person, I happen to be his, I find him every day. I high-five him. You're here. I'm his hype person. We do a little dance. He picks up a little Oreo on his way out the door. He has not missed one day of school, nor has he been tardy. So the, the work that we're doing, the work we're putting in, and maybe the innovative prototyping that we're doing at Woodside is something that we can see spread into our other Citrus Heights schools, because I think we have a really good thing going on right now. So all of you in the room who have been our amazing partners, Kathy and Kathy, like Kathy came and worked our book fair the other week. She shows up to my principal with coffee, coffee chats, and Kathy here has helped me with local food banks and what I do, and Al is like, my daughter is interning at Heights Church now. She's so inspired by the relationships that we have with these people. Bill at Chason, we just feel like we've been swooped up and loved on by our community here, and I think that the big piece is I'm feeling the community engagement right now, and I think this is something we need to spread, right? But getting our families involved, we've got a small but mighty PTO. They're awesome, and we're growing, and when they see the community partners pressing into our school site, it's even more motivating to show up. Last thing I'll say, our Coco and Crafts event, which was new this year, we just really went for it. We had over 300 students and adults, they're adults, at that event that night. And if anyone's not busy next Thursday night, we have a big steam night with Recreate, so you're welcome to join us at 6 o'clock at Woodside.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up, David Levis, Levis. Sorry, David.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. My name is David Levis, and I'm the principal at San Juan High School. Except for a short time after high school, serving in the United States Navy, I'd been a Citrus Heights resident for, since sixth grade. Graduated and went to San Juan Unified School District schools, came back from the Navy and went to America River College, graduated from Sac State. I taught at San Juan Unified School Districts, teaching history at Encina and San Juan High School, being a vice principal at Encina and El Camino High Schools, principal at the Alternative Learning Center in Fair Oaks, and now the principal at San Juan High School. The life of an educator is a difficult one, as it is for many people right now, I believe. That being said, myself and the staff at San Juan High School come every day to give our best to our students and our families. Our drive and our focus at San Juan High School is to build strong connections with students. We're a smaller school, the numbers of which allow us to know our students individually, to support them both academically and socio-emotionally. Teachers make a choice every year to be at San Juan High School. Our staff is dedicated to our students. Our neighborhoods are changing every day, and we're serving a more diverse population than ever before. Our staff at San Juan support refugee students from Afghanistan and Ukraine. San Juan High School is a Title I school, which you guys talked a lot about recently this evening, which means most of our students all come from low incomes. They're also very transient. Currently, we have served over 725 students this year, and our current enrollment is just under 600. That means we've had 125 students who've come and gone throughout this school year. This is why building community is so important. I believe separating from San Juan Unified School District would not aid in the process of building connections. I think it would encourage isolation. I draw a lot of support from our district and from the principals and staff members that I've developed strong relationships with over the years. As the principal of San Juan High School, I'm committed to our community and to our students, and I'm looking forward to working as a partner with our city leadership to continue supporting our families that live in our neighborhoods. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
David?
Yes.
First, I want to say, great hair. I'm so glad you're at San Juan High School. I really am. I've heard things about you. I've interacted with you a bit. I'm very happy you're there, but can you tell us what number you are of principals that have been in, at San Juan High School in the last 20 years?
There's been quite a number.
Would 10 be an unreasonable estimation?
In the last 20 years?
25 years, maybe?
No, that would not be.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Next up will be the Honorable Ben Avi.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers, thank you. Referring to me as honorable may be a bit much, but I'll accept it.
Your mom called me.
It is no secret that I ran for school board because I did not feel heard by the district. It's no secret that I ran for school board because I was disappointed in the performance of schools. I ran, I won, and the district is listening. I say that because when I first started hearing about Citrus Heights wanting to form their own district, I'm, I'm sure it was well into the conversation, but it was about the same time we were starting to talk about trustee areas, and I heard references to the fact that not a single school board member had resided in Citrus Heights in 20 years. I forget the number, but it was a long time. In trustee areas, we're going to guarantee that Citrus Heights had representation. I stood by the people of Citrus Heights when we pushed for representation. We pushed for seven members. We do have one dedicated seat that's wholly enclosed with Citrus Heights, but you also have four trustees now that represent Citrus Heights, including me. And I will say, I take my responsibility for my section of Citrus Heights very seriously. The students from Citrus Heights go to North Ridge Elementary, which is actually across Madison, outside the city. I've already been there three times in one year. To talk to that principal about what's going on at that school, what's going on with that students, they live in the apartments behind Sunrise Mall, so we have those, those family dynamics that we're dealing with, but we are making progress in that conversation and that conversation about representation. We've talked about how, you know, there's been two-by-twos for ages. I can tell you, I've sat in a lot of two-by-twos. I think some of the most productive two-by-twos I've sat in was the most recent one with the Citrus, City of Citrus Heights, where we truly started talking about how do we collaborate together? Not talking at each other, but talking with each other. We're making progress there. Our superintendent and the city manager, I feel like have a pretty good ongoing dialogue. Same thing with our staff. I know it's easy to say that these things have always been there and always existed, but I'm here to say that I think things are a little bit different now. As you alluded to, there is new leadership. There are new trustees. Yes, there have been new trustees. I understand that, but I think the trustees that are coming in, that are representing the people of Citrus Heights now have a different perspective on that leadership and their dedication to the community. I've also heard about inadequate investment in Citrus Heights. In recent meetings, we've heard about investment in arts. We've heard about investments in innovation in education. We've heard about investments in security and safety. We're putting money back into Citrus Heights, not because it's Citrus Heights, but because they're schools that we're responsible for, and it's the right thing to do, so we're doing it. I think your recommendation from the Education Committee is spot-on when it talks about fostering community engagement and support and family involvement in schools. What I want to see, I loved what you said, Councilmember, when you said the exercise. I, maybe I would call it the journey, right? Sometimes it's the journey rather than the destination. If this journey takes us to the city of Citrus Heights and San Juan Unified being a model for collaboration, city, school district collaboration, each doing what they're great at, I would love that outcome, and in two years, we come together and we say, wow, look what we did for the people of Citrus Heights. And oh, by the way, here's the model that every other city should be following. That's where I want to see us go, because I do think that we can improve things for our students. I have four kids in the district going to school today. My wife is volunteering at the Carnegie Dance tonight. I feel you. I'm there. I see it every day. I'm disappointed every day. It happens. That's why I got elected to the school board. But also, as a member of the school board, I get to see the positive things that are happening. I get to hear about the improving attendance rates. I get to hear about the initiatives that show progress. I also get to hear about the parts where we may not be hitting our goals, and I can tell you, and I think I've been pretty public about it, people know when I'm disappointed about that. I'm not going to shy away from those difficult conversations. That I will guarantee for you. So I hope this is a meaningful conversation that we get to have with the end result saying, how do we partner to ultimately do what's best for our kids? Thank you.
Thank you, Ben.
Before Ben gets away here, Ben, thank you very much for, for coming and for speaking like this. Okay, so here's the concern. The concern is, we really didn't see much move from the district until we started talking about having our own school district. That seemed to motivate the district to folk, put some focus on Woodside and some of the other areas. That's a positive thing. That's a really positive thing at the end of the day. So my, certainly, my motivation is certainly going to continue this process and try to figure out, maybe at the end of the day, it turns into a great partnership. I really hope it does, but at the same time, I think we need to also look out for what's happening in Citrus Heights, and again, we want to break this cycle of this economic problem that's happening in Citrus Heights where we're just constantly recycling these residents into something that they're always socially economically disadvantaged. So we got to break that cycle somehow, and if it takes this motivation, that's what we need, that's, that's what I think we need to do. So thank you, Ben. Appreciate that.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a clarifying question of the councilmember?
Sure.
About what was the time period around that where you started to feel like the district started moving?
Well, let's see. I brought it up in strategic planning in October of '21, I think, something around there.
Okay.
That was right when, when Ms. Bassinelli became the, or she was just about to be moved into the superintendent.
I will also note that that's also about the time period where you started seeing far more community engagement. You saw the San Juan Parents Association formed. You saw new council members being elected. So I don't, I, I don't want to say it's coincidence or correlation, but I will say that I think that there were other initiatives afoot that were driving innovation and change within the district around that same time period.
Great.
So I think it was a both, but I do think we're, we're on that right track.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up, Alan Dwing. And if I spelled, said that last name wrong, I'm sorry.
That's Alan Dory. It's kind of like a Punky Dory, but easy to pronounce. Well, I've been a Citrus Heights resident for over half my life, close to 40 years. I'm 70. Both of my kids went to Citrus Heights schools, well, not all Citrus Heights schools, excuse me, San Juan School District. My neighborhood, where I, where I lived, was an affluent neighborhood. I was the only blue-collar worker. We had doctors. We had lawyers. We had business owners, a lot of stay-at-home wives, a lot of people that had college education, original sets of kids. You mentioned that the average income in Citrus Heights is $65,000. If everyone in Citrus Heights made $65,000, we'd probably see most of the schools have a pretty level thing. But guess what? All the parents in my neighborhood, there were those well-off parents, including myself, we voted with our feet, and we went to Cambridge Heights, because I was, had my kids in coil, and, and my, my wife and I were the only original set of parents there. In fact, we were almost the only parents there, outside of a few foster parents. So some of these school districts, the schools that were underperforming, it has nothing to do with San Juan School District. This district has worked hard for a number of years. My, my son's autistic, and he's living independently. My daughter came out of San Juan School District, and right now, she's a few months away from graduating with a nursing degree, and she's either going to be the number one or the number two student unless something changes and she keeps flip-flopping with another kid. I enter, well, they're adults. My kids are both adults, but I'm old, so I can do that liberty. You know, this has been a good school district. It's been a fiscally conservative school district. You know, the state budget for schools, I represent school districts. I have five bargaining units at school districts out of my many assignments. It's, it's like a roller coaster since Prop 13, and because San Juan has been fiscally conservative, we got through those tough spots. And if you open up this school district of your own, I see it as a broke school district. I see that it's going to be hard to attract teachers. I think you're going to have a real problem with some of the things, and as soon as you do, the people will do like my, my old neighborhood did and vote with our feet. They'll go to a charter, they'll go outside of the district, and you'll get even more broke. We won't fix the problem. The problem is what you saw, that this, we're at 40% or wherever we're at. Why would you want this question? Because you want the kids to do better. We all want our community to do better. We want our students, our, our children, our grandkids, our neighbors' kids to all succeed, but the demographics are what they are. And you know what the biggest thing I would say besides the economics is, what if you have two parents? What if the, the parent doesn't speak English, or it's not their first language? What if the kid doesn't speak English? We've had a huge influx in this neighborhood of Citrus Heights, of Russian and Ukrainian people. There was now the Afghanistan people, and, and they don't speak English to start with, and I, and I welcome them. I welcome them, but if those schools are not going to do as well. The Sacramento Bee used to put out a, a, a big spread showing how each school competed. My, my kids both went to Will Rogers in San Juan School District, middle school, and it used to have great scores, and then it didn't. You know why? Because all of a sudden, they brought an influx of kids that didn't speak English. But they had three schools within that school. They had Beach House, Powerhouse, and Clubhouse, and one of those schools was all English second-language people, and they brought down the overall scores. Jeez, all the kids at, at Beach House, where my daughter was in, what do you know, parent participation, same as at Cambridge Heights. You know, you had parents that had their doctorates, they had their masters, they had businesses that they owned, and of course, they were going to sit there and make sure their kids did well. So our job is not to break away from a school district that's already used to handling and dealing with these problems, and we're going to just somehow magically fix it, wave a magic wand. Let's figure out ways to sit there, do more of the best practices, help out the San Juan School District, figure out how to get more kids engaged with parents helping them out. It's not easy if you've got one parent left and she's working two or three jobs, or if you've got two parents that are, that don't speak English and they can't help you. What about the parents that haven't finished high school? You've got those around some of those community schools, and those are still going to be the same kids if we were a Citrus Heights school district as they are now going to San Juan. So the way to fix it is for us to get more involved, and I think more involved with San Juan School District. I really thank you for my time that you've given me. I, I hope you guys keep working with it. I'm proud to be a resident of Citrus Heights. Like I say, it's over half my life, probably be the rest of my life. I, I enjoy this city. I think we do a good job, and then thank you, City Council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to go ahead and take a five-minute comfort break, okay? Be back in five minutes. We're going to go ahead and resume the meeting. Next speaker is Bill Van Duker. Next speaker is Bill Van Duker.
Good evening, Mayor Daniels and the rest of the council. I'm Bill Van Duker. I wanted to change my designation from private citizen on the speaker sheet to curmudgeon because, like Al Fox, I've changed the content of my remarks as the hearing progressed. First of all, I want to outline briefly my history of participation in the school district. I was president of the Intermediate School Parents and Administrators Advisory Council, which was a pretty powerful organization in the olden days. I was chair of Facilities and Transportation. And I was successful in leading the, getting the funding for the Mesa Verde Cafeteria. At that time, the kids were sitting on the floor in the hallways eating their lunch. And the school board wanted to spend the money on a theater at Rio. And we were successful in getting that building built out at Mesa. I served on curriculum and standards. I served on a task force on sexual education content. And I won't elaborate on the details of that particular task force. I served on Strategic Planning Councils for San Juan High School and Kingswood K-8. I'd like to make a comment on San Juan High School. At the time that I served on that Strategic Planning Council, if all of the students that resided in the San Juan High School boundaries went to San Juan High School, it would have been the second largest high school in the district. As it is with open enrollment, kids go outside. I would point out, Mayor Daniels, that the $260 million is based on retaining all of the students. And the statistics show that at least half of our students don't stay in Citrus Heights. So we'd really be dealing with a budget of maybe $120 million instead of $260 million. Regarding parent participation, I learned when I was on the Strategic Council at Kingswood that not only were some of the parents not speaking English, but some of them were illiterate in their own native language. And with 12 language groups at that time, it was very, very difficult to get parent participation of any kind. The offer of translators and all of that didn't do much. What worked best was that some of the teachers were making home visits into the homes of the kids that were struggling so much. Regarding the economic issue, I would point out that if the median income is $65,000 per year, then that means that approximately half the people are making less than that. And our Rotary Club, which Al Fox mentioned, that within the last 30 days, we've distributed 624 pairs of shoes to the elementary and middle school schools for the kids that come to school with worn-out shoes. And when I called up Kingswood to make the delivery of about 80 pairs over there, the secretary, who I've known for some time, said, "We are so glad that you made this call because we're down to our last five pairs of shoes." We also, Rotary put in an application with each shoe delivery for the school to apply for a mini grant of $250, and it's pretty much automatically approved. The purpose of the mini grant is to buy underwear and socks for the pre-K through eight, pre-K through second grade kids that sometimes soil their pants or don't come to school without socks and that kind of thing. So there is a real socioeconomic problem here. I also would like to point out that one of my mantras for decades has been that we don't have any feeder schools when we have one feeder school for the high school. It was a bit misleading on the part of the committee to indicate that we had four middle schools. They classified Kingswood, Lichen, and Woodside as middle schools. They are not middle schools, they're pre-K through eight. I see my time's about up. I don't support spending any more money on exploring, finding, or establishing our own school district. I think we have to get involved at the site level and with innovative teachers and programs and see what we can do as we move forward. The issue of cross-district enrollment is one that we cannot, we cannot stop. It's state law, and if we form our own school district, there's no guarantee that the kids that live in Citrus Heights would remain here. I have a few other things, but thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Next up is Roxanne Stelmacher. Sorry if I slayed that name.
You did pretty good. My maiden name is Daniels, much easier to say. Ladies and gentlemen, esteemed members of the council, parents, community members, my name is Roxanne Stelmacher and I serve as the current interim principal at Lichen P8. And it happens to be in District One. I stand before you today to advocate for the continued partnership between the city of Citrus Heights and the San Juan Unified School District. This decision is crucial to ensuring that our students have uninterrupted access to the wealth of resources, expertise, and unwavering commitment to student growth and well-being that has characterized our district. We've talked a lot here tonight about the things that we might not have. I would like to highlight some of the things that have helped to make us exceptional for the families and students in Citrus Heights. The San Juan Unified School District is deeply committed to providing a foundation upon which our students can build their futures. The access to resources within the district has been instrumental in shaping the educational landscape of Citrus Heights. The innovative school at Woodside P8 is a testament to the district's commitment to pushing the boundaries of education, fostering creativity, and preparing students for the challenges of the future. Moreover, the recent development of the state-of-the-art stadium at Mesa Verde High School highlights the district's dedication to providing top-notch facilities and extracurricular opportunities to our students. This not only enhances their educational experience, but it also instills a sense of pride and community within Citrus Heights. The district's commitment to student success is further exemplified by the deliberate placement of deeply committed and skilled leaders at each of the school sites within Citrus Heights. These leaders work tirelessly every day, you had five of them here tonight, to ensure that instruction is of the highest quality, enrichment opportunities abound, and family engagement remains a cornerstone of the educational process. It is through their leadership that we see tangible evidence of the district's commitment to the growth and development of our students. Our students deserve nothing less than the very best in terms of instruction and social-emotional support. By remaining in San Juan Unified School District, we ensure that Citrus Heights students and families actively receive not just the academic support, but also the social-emotional support that they need for success. The students at my school, Lichen P8, receive robust supports from four different emotional support providers, two counselors, one social worker, and a school community intervention specialist. We also have access to social-emotional technicians, behavioral specialists, and therapeutic crisis supports. Those are because San Juan Unified is deeply committed to a holistic approach to student success. As a community grappling with issues related to poverty and substance abuse issues, these services are critical in the care of our students. The collaborative effort between our school, the district, and the community have forged a unique environment where every child is given the opportunity to flourish and every parent has a partner in the well-being of their family. I ask the board to consider the stories of success, the innovative initiatives, and the unwavering commitment to excellence that defines San Juan Unified School District. Let us continue to provide our students in Citrus Heights and the resources, expertise, and support that they need, not only to succeed academically, but also to grow and thrive as individuals. Our community's future depends on the decisions that we make in this room. And I believe that staying with San Juan Unified School District is the key to unlocking the full potential of every student in Citrus Heights. Thank you very much for your time tonight.
Next up is Cheryl Dulz.
Good evening, Mayor Daniels, Vice Mayor Carpansky Costa, and esteemed board members, council members. Thank you for the opportunity to address you tonight. I stand before you on this agenda item for many reasons. My name is Cheryl Dulz, and I'm a devoted resident and educator deeply intertwined within the fabric of the Citrus Heights community. I bought a house 30 years ago, I just paid it off. And for 25 years, I've had the privilege of serving the wonderful children of Kingswood K8, an experience that profoundly shaped my perspective. Most importantly, I'm a parent of a wonderful child and an aunt of a niece and nephew who had a temporary home with me, all students in Citrus Heights schools. I'm also active within the Citrus Heights community. My efforts predominantly revolve around supporting families navigating the educational complexities when their children have learning or health challenges. Presently, I serve as a mentor teacher within San Juan Unified in the system of professional growth and the Cultivating Leasures program. I believe in Citrus Heights, I'm still here. I also have an unwavering belief in the transformative power of public education to enrich and uplift lives. At the crux of your deliberations tonight, you have a monumental decision that will reverberate across my community, the question of whether to sever ties with the San Juan Unified School District. It's my belief that we need to preserve our partnership with San Juan Unified, and it's a decision grounded in thoughtful consideration and forward-thinking vision. From my extensive lived experience, I'd like to give you a few ideas about, around the many benefits of remaining within our larger school district. First, for students with special needs, an issue that I'm deeply passionate about, the expansive resources afforded by larger districts are invaluable. From adaptive physical education to specialized therapy sessions such as speech, occupational therapy, and the provision of assistive technology, a large district offers a comprehensive support network tailored to the diverse needs of our students. Secondly, the spectrum of specialized classes available within larger districts ensures that every student finds their niche. Also, amidst the looming specter of teacher shortage, larger districts possess the requisite infrastructure to attract and retain teaching talent with robust support mechanisms, encompassing induction programs, internships, and teacher residencies, which are vital lifelines in nurturing the next generation of educators. But in addition to all of that, in Superintendent Bassinelli and our current trustee board, we are fortunate to have visionary leadership that is poised to navigate the challenges ahead with unwavering resolve and collaborative spirit. I have complete confidence in their ability to forge even deeper partnerships within Citrus Heights, charting a course toward a shared vision and educational excellence. In summation, as an ardent advocate for public education and a long-term Citrus Heights resident, I implore you to not leave the San Juan Unified School District. And instead, let's redouble our efforts in fostering collaboration and innovation to address the challenges that lie ahead. Thank you so much for your invaluable time and attention.
Thank you very much. Next up will be the Honorable Saul Hernandez.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, members of the community. Appreciate your time and your service. My name is Saul Hernandez and I'm a trustee on the San Juan Unified School Board, and I've been on the board for over 11 years. I come here tonight to share my opinion and give you some food for thought. You may have heard the phrase, "There is strength in numbers." San Juan Unified School District is the 10th-largest school district in the state of California. I previously shared my opinion with one of your city council members that if Citrus Heights were to decide to leave, the San Juan Unified District, I'm sorry, if Citrus Heights were to decide to leave, that they, becoming their own, would have to close one of the two high schools that you currently have in Citrus Heights. The reason, you wouldn't have the enrollment numbers to sustain two high schools. For example, and I'll use San Juan High School, with 584 students with a capacity of 1,400, the operation cost would surpass your ability to maintain. And if you decided to keep it open, you would have to subsidize from other funds. You may ask, why and how did San Juan Unified School District decide to keep San Juan High open over these past years? The answer, there is strength in numbers. We chose not to close San Juan High School and decided to invest in San Juan High. We spent over $40 million with renovations and facilities. We also invested in career tech programs with a state-of-the-art culinary program, media production facility, construction pathway, and automotive technology center. We are currently in the planning stages to start construction in the summer of 2025 with an enhanced new stadium and field along with a new science wing. This is courtesy of a very strong bond program made possible by the entire San Juan Unified School District community. In addition, administrative costs for small districts will likely have a higher cost per student. Consider fixed costs of a district office and school buildings. Also, the cost and expertise to establish a bus transportation department, a food service warehouse, and a distribution program, a general-purpose warehouse for maintenance, operations, and a technology division. With all these core facilities and services, you will need to maintain, compliant with federal, state, and educational codes. As mentioned earlier, filling key-level management positions may be difficult, especially in the current environment where finding experienced, high-quality staff is challenging. My comments and opinions come with a very strong recommendation that you choose not to proceed with leaving San Juan Unified School District and instead, continue to invest in our partnership for our students, families, and community. I thank you for your attention, and please remember, there is strength in numbers.
Saul, I have a question. You mentioned that there's 584 students at San Juan High School?
Yes, sir.
And the capacity is 1,400. 2,200 high school students leave our city every day to go to school somewhere else. Why?
Well, I, kids are going to go where they're interested in going. And mostly, I've been the board member for 11 years, and what I have surmised is that they go where their friends go. I really do believe that. And they're going to go where they have programs that interest them, sports, arts, whatever it may be. That's my opinion.
Okay, thank you, sir, very much.
Thank you.
Okay, last but not least, the Honorable Melissa Bassinelli.
Good evening, thank you. I'm here to you tonight to give comment on the discussion of district reorganization. San Juan Unified School District and the city of Citrus Heights share the same interests. We're interested in increasing school safety, improving academics, and strengthening family and community engagement. We believe in San Juan Unified, that the path to this is through partnerships. Since stepping into this role over a year ago, I'm encouraged by the ways that we've increased and improved our lines of communication. We have improved them in between district staff and city staff, between our schools and our neighborhoods, and also between council members and trustees. As a unified school district, we are maximizing our resources in flexible and innovative ways to support Citrus Heights city schools. You've heard a little bit about it, but I'm going to elaborate a little bit more. We've invested over $1.85 million into fencing improvements. They're specifically getting started at Arlington Heights, Kingswood, Lichen, and Mesa Verde. We've invested $763,000 into safety and supervision positions within Citrus Heights schools. An additional $400,000 in federal Title I dollars have been allocated annually to Mesa Verde High School in response to the changing demographics. More than $160 million in bond investments have been invested within Citrus Heights since 2002, including a $26 million stadium at Mesa Verde High School. Additionally, as trustee Hernandez said, San Juan Unified has the ability to support smaller learning communities such as though in the city of Citrus Heights. I say this with also the knowledge that we have increased investments in our instructional support, such as intervention teachers, instructional assistants, before-and-after-school programs have expanded, as well as CTE pathways and dual enrollment. As trustee Hernandez spoke, we are stronger when we work together. The family and community excitement that you heard out of Principal Wall tonight related to the Woodside Innovative Schools Program cannot go unnoticed. There's been a revitalization within the community and engagement with families and community partners that has really changed the landscape at that school just within a short amount of time. We believe we can capitalize on this momentum at other schools. The energy at Mesa Verde Stadium- The energy at Mesa Verde Stadium ribbon-cutting, which I know many of you were at, it was electric, and it illustrated the opportunities that we have to tap into our community pride together. And even tonight, the community partners who had shown up to speak tonight, and even the partners that you highlighted in your resolution specifically naming the strategies that they did to support our schools together, our Citrus Heights schools, cannot go unnoticed, and it speaks to the examples and the power and the potential that's within this community when we work together. In short, our goal is shared. It's to help each and every student in Citrus Heights schools reach their highest and full potential and reach their loftiest dreams in a safe, supported, and academically challenging schools. The path to this improvement is paved with a commitment of partnership and collaboration, similar to what you see in your top bullet with your recommendations from your committee, and it's also paved with fostering positive community engagement and family support. So we, again, we share the interest in increasing our enrollment, our attendance, our academic achievement, and our safety, and that we believe that we do this together. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Question?
I have a question. Ms. Bassinelli, Superintendent Bassinelli, I know that San Juan is a Title I school. Is that the only Title I school in our city?
No, it's not.
How many Title I schools are there?
It's the majority of them.
Oh, majority of them.
Yeah, I think all but one.
Thank you.
Okay, that's it for speakers.
Mayor?
I'm sorry.
I do have one written.
I really remembered like one minute ago and then forgot. Go ahead.
So we received one written comment. It's from TK Milton, and they state, "I am opposed to forming our own school district. The San Juan Unified School District is well-established. There are many boomer retirees in our city as well as unhomed singles without families. The burden for community needs already falls heavily on the middle class and retirees. Please let's not add more to our plates than is necessary, especially in California's current economy." And that concludes the comment.
Thank you very much. Okay, now, that's the end of the comments. So we'll go to council members, comments, questions, anything like that. Anybody want to start? Councilmember Lopez Taft.
I have no further comments than what I already expressed.
Okay. Councilmember Middleton. Councilmember Schaefer.
Yes.
Amy, can you put up the PowerPoint, please?
All right. So, we don't take this decision lightly. This process would very likely be a long time. When you look at other school districts around the state who are contemplating the same thing, it's over ten years. This isn't happening tomorrow. Even if we voted to move forward with it, with moving forward to having the committee continue, this is not happening tomorrow. So we still plenty of time to work with the district and for the district to show that, hey, we're turning things around. And the next slide piece? So, families in Citrus Heights are our economic engine. They buy diapers, they buy bikes, they buy clothes. Currently, our demographic is aging because we don't have young families that are moving to Citrus Heights. Now, you can compare cities. I picked Folsom in this case. Now, I realize that there is a very different socioeconomic dynamic in Folsom, but they have about the same, as Mayor Daniels discussed, about the same amount of population. Can I have the next slide, please? So, I jumped ahead here, but what do we already have that we can offer families? We have abundant, affordable housing, and we have community shopping opportunities. We have central location for ample employment opportunities, a friendly city and excellent community engagement, lots of entertainment opportunities, bowling, roller skating, bicycling, and we have a diverse faith base. What these companies, what these families need is great educational opportunities in both public charter and private schools. We have a fair amount of private schools in the city. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to really get up, get much data on them. I have spent a lot of time on the public, on the California Department of Education website, which is arduous, to say the least. Of the top five schools, according to Great Schools, now, we could all dispute on that particular website and how we're going to look at this, but if I'm a consumer, that's where I'm going to go. I'm not going to go to the district and say, "What is a district thing?" So the top five, we have Cambridge Heights, which we already know that's, that school's unique, that's rated eight out of ten, Sky Crest Elementary, seven out of ten, but of the top five schools, three are rated below five or below. That's really concerning. And the next slide, please. And unfortunately, this has really come out, but Folsom, you look at Folsom, their population is eighty-three-two-sixty-nine. These colors on here are actually links, so you can link the data. People say, "Well, where'd you get the data?" You can link right to that, and you pop right in there, and it'll show you where they are. But, so they have a population of eighty-three thousand-two-sixty-nine. We have a population of eighty-three thousand-four-thirty-three. So, the total of five, five-years-old to eighteen-year school-aged children are, we show, you showed thirteen thousand, this shows twelve thousand-nine-hundred-sixty-five. So, but here's the difference. You look at Folsom, the sales tax, just the sales tax from all the families that are moving there, they have spent, get twenty-eight million dollars a year in sales tax to our fourteen million. We're, we have more school-aged children, oh, sorry, less school-aged children because the families are moving there. So, and here's another, some key statistics I looked at is, you look at Folsom High School, houses twenty-five-hundred-eighty-nine students. Vista del Lago in Folsom is eighteen-ten. That's four thousand-three-ninety-nine students in their two high schools compared to our two high schools at fourteen-hundred-thirty-eight. Again, parents are walking with their feet. They are moving, they're, they're, they're not coming to, I had a, this is several years ago, a brother that was moving up to the Bay Area. I wanted him to move to Citrus Heights, and he said, "No way. The schools are terrible in Citrus Heights." So, he lives in Roseville. So, anyway. So, the question is, is it, are we willing to leave the future vibrant sea to San Juan Unified School District that has been failing us and our children for decades? That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor, anything? No? Okay. Well, so, comments? You know, I think a lot of things have been said. Let me first take the opportunity to thank Cyrus and the team. A lot of hard work, a lot of hard work, a lot of numbers, a lot of different things to look at, and I appreciate the fact that they took a deep dive into those things and worked on them. I don't agree with the recommendation, but I appreciate the work, no doubt about it. You know, to me, things come back to local control. Citrus Heights became a city because we wanted local control, formed our own police department so we could have local control. And when I think about a school district and Citrus Heights, it's just kind of strange to me how, and I've never researched this, and I should have researched this, but it's called the San Juan Unified School District, and we've got San Juan Schools. I don't know if it started here or what, but it obviously has grown and grown and grown, and now it's this forty-nine-thousand-member-student district. It's huge. It's just absolutely huge. And so, there's a lot of things that go on throughout the district that are equally important, you know, something in Carmichael, something in Fair Oaks, Orangeville, wherever, you know, and things are going on in Citrus Heights, and they're all equally important and whatnot, but you can only focus so much then at one time on certain things. And I really like, one of the things that really concerns me is the, the response to school safety and hardening schools, and, you know, we've seen a commitment by the district to put a lot of money into that, but we've watched and watched and watched as it's taken years now, literally years, to move these things forward, and a lot of it is still not completed. Think a smaller district like, if we had a San, excuse me, a Citrus Heights school district, we would have seen our schools hardened by now. We would have taken that priority and ran with it a lot quicker. It's not a bash on the district, that's just a confirmation that it's a big district, you know, there's tons of schools, so focus just can't be Citrus Heights schools. So I would think that local control, better control, would be a more responsive type of school district. Five members or whatever the makeup would be that are actually all within the Citrus Heights are more accountable than seven members that have only one person that lives in Citrus Heights. The bottom line is, you know, that is a much more, much stronger accountability with five members that are located within Citrus Heights. So I think the ability to pursue our destiny as our own school district is enhanced by having a smaller district. I think the ability to bring our kids back to Citrus Heights because it is something new, you can show that, people do, do respond to that. I just, when I look at these scores, and when I look at these numbers about how many kids leave our school, it just, it's just mind-boggling to me. And it's not something that happened overnight, it's been going on for years and years and years, and it, it, it isn't a slam to the new superintendent or the newer board members or whatever, but we've, we've, you know, we've done that before, we've looked at that before, we've thought that before, and, and you see the test scores. I mean, that's, that's the bottom line. The test scores tell you the story. So, I don't, I don't want to appear to, to dirty up the San Juan School District. I think it's a great district. I just think it's too big, you know? I was raised in the San Juan School District, raised my kids in the San Juan School District, three of my four granddaughters are in the San Juan School District. It's not about that, it's just about that, the city, the district has become too large, and I feel one hundred percent that we would do better with local control and forming our own school district. So we'll decide now what we want to do, and that can come in different directions. Again, it'll still be up to council members to whatever kind of motion wants to be made. It can die right here. We can make a motion to pursue a, an effort directly or...
Is this an action item, or was it just to accept the report?
No, no, it's, we'll give, provide direction. Or we, or we look at different ways to examine it further. So, I'll listen to whatever the pleasure of the council is.
Well, I'd like to take the majority recommendation that we pursue continuing collaboration and partnership in tandem with the fostering, finding ways to foster positive community engagement, support family involvement in the schools. I don't know that we have had a strong enough effort in that regard, and that would be my recommendation.
Okay. Any other comments, questions?
I'll agree with Jane.
I also agree.
I'm going to go ahead and jump through the hoop, and I will make a motion, I didn't hear a motion, so I'll make a motion that we move forward with pursuing our own school district.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments to the motion? Hearing none, go ahead and take a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Lopez Taft?
No.
Councilmember Middleton?
No.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Karpinski-Costa?
No.
Mayor Daniels?
No, excuse me, yes. Yes. I'm tired. Yes. So that motion fails? Any other motions?
I'd like to move that we go with the recommendation of the Education Committee to pursue collaboration and partnership opportunities with San Juan Unified School District and work on efforts to foster positive community engagement and support family involvement in our schools.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments regarding the motion?
Yes.
Go ahead.
What's measurable about that? How we prove, how we show that we're actually, that there's a result from that?
I just want to call for the question.
Okay. I'm not going to entertain that, but do you, I don't know if you, is that a question to somebody directly?
Yes, that's a question to whoever made the motion.
Jane, you want to respond to that?
How do we show, what's, what's, how do we show that, that we're making progress on that? Pursue collaboration, that's very vague.
You know, we have current numbers that have been provided by the Education Committee, and we will see what the numbers are next year, which will also be provided and measurable through the same measures that the committee used to give us these numbers that were provided during their presentation.
Okay. Any other questions or comments regarding the motion? Go ahead and take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Lopez Taft?
Yes.
Councilmember Middleton?
Yes.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Karpinski-Costa?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
Next item we have is item number thirteen, regular calendar. The subject is change in regular city council meeting day, and mayor and city council members, this item is a discussion item on whether or not to move city council meetings to the second and fourth Wednesdays of the month at six P M. Staff has conducted some research and evaluated our current city council meeting schedules of the second and fourth Thursdays, and have found that sometimes there's activities such as community group events, summer park activities, regional board meetings that councils participates in, conferences that have sometimes conflicted with Thursday meetings, and we've had to cancel a meeting from time to time. Staff also spoke with the Metropolitan Cable Television Commission to determine, because we have a goal that we want to continue in broadcasting our meeting live on Metro Cable fourteen, and they confirmed that if the council so desired to move the meetings, they would be able to continue to livestream our meetings live on Metro Cable fourteen, and that would, we also supplement with livestreaming our meetings on our YouTube channel as well. And so with that, this item is for the council's discussion, and if council chooses to support changing the regular meeting schedule, staff would come back at a future meeting with an action item for council's consideration.
Is that it?
Yes, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
I have one speaker sheet before I call that person. Any comments or questions for Amy?
How do we arrive at Wednesday?
I did some research into our city council meetings, and when the city first incorporated, we actually were on Wednesdays, and we had moved to Thursdays to provide the opportunity for live broadcasting on Metro Cable, because previously our meetings were taped and rebroadcast on Metro Cable fourteen, so we moved to Thursdays. But now, with advancements in technology and various items, we're able to continue, even if we decide to change the schedule, to continue with that goal of...
Great. Okay. Thank you. Okay, one speaker sheet, I'll call up Natalie Price.
Hello again, mayor, vice mayor, council members, city staff. I am still Natalie Price. I don't have a preference on whether you keep Thursdays or get Thursdays. I do not oppose or support this. However, it does matter to me where you move the Planning Commission meetings, and that will eventually become part of this discussion if you move forward with this. When I accepted the role of a planning commissioner, which I was very grateful to be appointed to and happy to accept, I petitioned my local Lions Clubs to move their meetings. They were originally on the second and fourth Wednesdays of the month, and they moved it to the first and the third to accommodate the Planning Commission of Citrus Heights. Last night at our Planning Commission meeting, when Allison brought this topic to us, she said there would possibly be two proposals moving forward. One would be that if you accept the transition, that the Planning Commission meeting would be moved to the Tuesday prior to your new Wednesday council meetings. The other was that the Planning Commission meeting would be moved to the alternate Wednesdays. This would monopolize calendar every Wednesday in the month, various, fifth Wednesday, I guess I'd be available, but I would at that point in time be hard-pressed to make a decision between serving my community as a planning commissioner or serving my community at large as a Lion. I ask that if you move forward with that, you take that into consideration, and if it doesn't do hardship to the council, that you would move Planning Commission to the Tuesday before your council meeting versus monopolizing every Wednesday. And I thank you for that consideration.
Thank you very much.
Makes sense.
That's all the speakers I have. Amy, you have any? There's... That's all the speakers I have. Amy, you have any additional?
No, I don't.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
I think what Natalie says makes-
Hereing none, I'll make a motion if somebody wants to make-
Well, what Natalie says makes sense, though. When we, when we draft the staff report, we should include the planning commission thing.
Well, I think, I think in fairness, I, I mean, I, I agree. I hope we do that and that works, but I think also we have to, to check with all the other planning commissioners because that's a big group.
Well, let's do that, then.
Okay. Is that a motion?
Sure, that's a motion.
Okay. I believe she made a motion to change the-
No, we, we're not acting this time. She's bringing back a, a, a action item coming up, right?
Just looking for a consensus.
I'm hearing direction to staff to bring back an item, and as part of that item, we would include a discussion regarding the planning commission.
Direction for staff, bring back the item. I'll make the motion for-
Well, we don't need a motion.
To bring back the item.
Is it, yeah, direction to-
Yeah, let's do that. Sounds good to me.
Sounds like we got a majority.
I'd rather not change it.
I don't really care.
Well, I'll be able to go to my kid's swim practice.
I'm not a warrior, so I-
Okay. Anything else on that item? Do you have direction?
Yes.
Okay. Next item, please.
Next item is, uh, Department of Reports number fourteen, the Peer Support K-9, um, and we're actually, um, gonna move that to a future meeting. Um, so we'll bring that presentation back at a future meeting.
All right. Next item, please.
So, our next item is Department of Reports number fifteen. The subject is Enterprise Resource Planning System update by the Administrative Services Department.
I open my mouth, this is reason. Sorry.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. Susan Talwar here, Administrative Services Director, uh, to provide you an update on the information technology upgrades that, uh, was a council-approved item that we brought to you back in October of twenty-twenty-two. Um, so with that, uh, just a quick couple of slides, won't take too much of your time. I have here with me our information technology manager, Robert Miller, who will also be assisting in the, uh, presentation. So, if you recall, we had, uh, two components to the, um, information technology upgrades. One was the Enterprise Resource Management System, which was, uh, Tyler Munis, the purchase of that software. And the second piece was overall hardware infrastructure upgrades. Um, first, we're gonna go through the ERP system. So, we had three modules for that. One was, uh, the financial module, the human resources, and the Intergov piece. Um, we started with the implementation of the financial management piece, and, uh, just going right through it, you can see here, we started back in, um, let's see, last year, so April of twenty-twenty-three. Um, we are coming up, come, to complete in May. So, we are about ninety-one percent of the way through of the implementation of this module. This module is what we would call the hub of the total enterprise system, and then from there, we have the spokes that we're gonna build out. Um, with that being said, we have the human resources management that we have also started concurrently. We started that in October, and that is also a year-long process. So, you can see here, we are about sixty-three percent of the way through on the human resources component. So, that does include our time and attendance piece as well, and, excuse me, the management of the payroll and budget functions for, uh, staffing.
Evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the city council. Um, as far as Intergov goes, it's Tyler's Enterprise, uh, permitting and licensing system. Implementation will begin a little bit later this year, roughly probably June, July. Um, I could go into the benefits above, but really we'll be looking to consolidate roughly four separate applications currently into one system. Our business licenses, building permits, um, encroachment permits, and, um, some of the planning projects. Um, the biggest piece to all of that, minus the, you know, the efficiency and all those gains, is really we'll be able to provide our citizens with one window to interact with the city on these topics, um, from managing, creating, and getting updates on their permits and licenses and paying for them online.
Will that include dog licenses and, we are animal licensing?
Um, I, that's not part of the original implementation, but by moving to Intergov, it does set us up to be able to, um, implement different things in the future.
That'd be nice.
Yeah. Um, as far as the information technology upgrades themselves, this is generalized IT. We've, um, in the last, uh, year, we've upgraded our virtual server infrastructure. Um, we've replaced a, a, a core network switch that provides better throughput to our infrastructure. Our backup system has been replaced, and we now have, we implemented a tape drive, which seems like nineteen-nineties technology, but it does help secure us from ransomware. Um, and we've replaced a few desktops with, with the money that we've been provided. Um, remaining work to be done. We're looking at implementing multi-factor authentication, um, citywide. Um, this is primarily gonna start with the PDE, um, because they have a requirement by DOJ, and then additional networking and computer replacements.
And that is the update of where we are today.
Any comments or questions of staff? Thank you.
I have a question. So, with the nine-one-one calls, is this part of that? Do, is, is this technology go to our-
I, I think you're thinking about the communication center setup. That was a different, different funding.
All right. Thank you very much.
No problem. Thank you.
Thanks. Next item, please.
Next item is, um, city manager items.
Great. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the city council. Ash, if any, you're city manager. I do have a few updates, and, but I first want to just thank and acknowledge, um, uh, Director Talwar and, and Robert Miller in their work on the ERP system, uh, and our, really our entire Administrative Services, uh, Department on that, on that effort. And Robert is, uh, relatively new to the city, and he's made some, some great improvements and some great strides in our technology, uh, in helping us advance in those areas. So, definitely grateful to the team for that. On the updates I have for you this evening, if I could just go to the next slide, please. Uh, got some good news. Uh, we have some money coming in to City of Citrus Heights. So, Congressman Bera, uh, was successful in securing a congressional appropriation for City of Citrus Heights, uh, and this budget was, uh, signed, uh, over the weekend, uh, by the president. And so, in that, from the community project funding, we have one point six million dollars, uh, for Citrus Heights Intelligent Transportation System enhancements. And this-
What is that?
Great question, right? Uh, and so, we have a lot of outdated, uh, cabinets and signalization, uh, and this helps us modernize, uh, some of that, um, here in the city. And so, we're really excited about it. Director Cave, as well as City Engineer Bloomquist, uh, really put forward a compelling argument on behalf of the residents and businesses here, and, uh, the congressman and his team, uh, went to bat for it. And so, I'm very, uh, happy that we were able to secure that funding. In addition to that, you'll see a picture here with, uh, Councilmember Schaefer present with the congressman, uh, as well as members of our team, and also members of Habitat for Humanity. And when, um, when the visit happened, we were talking about advocating for funding for Citrus Heights, one of those projects was the Sayonara site. And so, collectively, uh, you know, we put forward our advocacy for that, and there was over a million dollars that's funded for the Habitat for Humanity project on Sayonara that we have an obligation to fulfill. So, uh, uh, good news on that front. If we can carry this to the next slide.
Ash, I have a, I have a quick question.
Sure.
Is that, when I initially read the intelligent, uh, transportation thing, I thought maybe that was Smart Ride. Did we figure out what the, because the Smart Ride, but, funding ran out about a year ago, I think.
Yeah, I'd have to, I can get back to the council certainly on an update on Smart Ride, but this is more, uh, infrastructure-related.
Okay.
Uh, the other thing that we learned, actually just, uh, yesterday, this just in, we had participated with CACOG and some of our regional partners to apply for a federal grant opportunity, uh, you know, utilizing the, the Green Means Go program. Um, and we were successful. We were, one of the jurisdictions that was awarded, we have four hundred and fifty thousand dollars that was awarded through that grant for preliminary engineering associated with the infrastructure around Sunrise Tomorrow, and this came out of a federal grant. And there have been communities that have tried to get this grant before and have been unsuccessful, but when we did a regional approach to this, those that participated were successful. So, we have four hundred and fifty thousand dollars coming into Citrus Heights for this effort.
So, this would be part of what we talked about earlier, about the financing authority, that, you know, how to raise money for the infrastructure. So, this is the start?
This would be a grant that specifically looks at engineering analysis, so a design, and there's some specific items that are spelled out in that grant application. So, uh, say like roadway frontage improvements, um, main trunk lines and things of that nature that would ultimately need to come in to serve the site. So, some of the heavy infrastructure, it would allow us to go and do those engineering studies, and it's funded through this grant. If I can go to the next slide, please. Uh, we also had a, uh, effort that really slowed me down the other day, but I was going the speed limit when I looked, um, and I saw the, uh, the motorcycles out there on San Juan. Uh, but on March thirteenth, we had a regional effort on traffic, uh, where we partnered up with some of our regional agencies, including Folsom and Elk Grove, as well as Sacramento County Sheriff's Department, to do a, uh, really a blitz on traffic enforcement. And so, that was on Wednesday, March thirteenth, here in Citrus Heights. Great partnership we have, and that resulted, uh, in slowing the city. And you can see there were a number of stops and a number of citations issued, uh, that day, and that's definitely part of our, uh, effort to control traffic and speed here in the city. So, kudos to the team on that.
So, seven got away.
They, uh, those might, those might have warranted a warning. Who, who knows where they were, but, uh, but they definitely made the stops and citations there. Uh, another thing that the council really had asked a lot of questions on, and this really is, uh, the council's responsible for this. You know, you asked the questions, we went to work with the Sunrise Parks and Rec District and Meals on Wheels to get the All Seasons Cafe opening again. And it's gonna be happening, uh, at Crosswoods Community Center, uh, next to Sylvan Oaks Library, and that meal service will be on Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays at eleven-thirty A.M. So, uh, some good news on that front, and it, it's, it actually just started on March fifth. Uh, we do have the cannabis dispensary workshop, the public workshop. Uh, we're looking to get feedback based on the direction of the council that we'll then bring back to you at a future meeting. That is gonna be held from six to seven P.M. on Wednesday, April third. And then finally, uh, this was talked about earlier, we have our strategic planning meeting. Uh, we've been doing the roadshow, uh, out in the community, get, gathering feedback, understanding community priorities, and looking forward to, uh, having our exec team meet with the city council and go over our next year of planning and, and kind of setting the mission for the city. Uh, that meeting will be held in the community center, starting at eight-thirty A.M. on Thursday, March twenty-eighth. That's gonna be a, uh, robust day, uh, that, uh, planned in it too, but it may go a little longer. That will replace our regular meeting that would normally be scheduled for that day. So, the next, uh, regular meeting would fall into April. Um, but our strategic planning retreat is open to the public, and we will have public comment opportunity there. And that concludes my updates.
All right. Next item, please.
Next item is items requested by council members or future agenda items.
Okay. Anybody, anything on this side? No, no, anything? Go ahead.
I always have two. Um, one is a question of the police department, who thankfully is always in the back of our room during this meeting. Um, I get emails, uh, Saturday, April twenty-seven, I believe it's the seven, uh, is National Drug Takeback Day. Do you know, and it lists Citrus Heights Police Department as a place that people can bring their drugs. Is that true? And if so, I'm happy to notify the messenger to put a blurb. Because people always ask-
Yes.
-what to do with drugs. So, is there a time that, that will happen?
I can send that out to council. We'll, we'll be putting that on our social media as well. So, yeah, we will be doing it.
I don't do social media, so just send it out to council.
I'll send the same exact information off to council as well.
And I'm sure we'll also get it to the messenger as well.
Okay, okay. Because I know a lot of people ask about that, and I know the Walgreens used to have a little box there, and if there's still a Walgreens, which I don't know if they're still there anymore, but if the box used to be full and people couldn't put anything in.
It'll be ten to two on that day.
Ten to two.
Mm-hmm. And it'll be staffed by, uh, not only our staff, but our great volunteers will be helping.
Michael's gonna be there, huh? Thank you.
You're welcome.
My second thing is that since we passed tonight, um, a res, what is it, a resolution or whatever, to for, go forward with collaboration with the schools, could I ask this, our education committee to have a meeting and discuss the procedures for doing that, and let us know what's going on and how we're gonna go, you wanted something to measure, how we're gonna go about what that collaboration is gonna look like, what you're gonna do for parental involvement, because, you know, there are people could get more involved if we knew the plan. So, I'm just asking if the education committee could get together-
I'm not on the education.
Who's on it?
Jane and Brett.
Jane and Brett?
Yeah.
Could you guys kind of develop some plan?
Sure.
Well, that's what you're supposed to do on the committee. Develop a plan.
Develop a plan. Okay. Anybody else, anything?
Develop your plan.
Okay. Um, so Ash, I'm just gonna, um, I know we have a closed session to go into, and then it says adjournment at the end. Should I not adjourn this meeting then?
Adjourn to closed session.
We can adjourn to closed session is what we're going to say. Okay. Um, I, I'm, I'm just gonna go ahead and report out on the, uh, I have a potential, um, perceived conflict of interest on that, and so I won't be, uh, participating in that meeting.
You get to go home?
I do.
No, you're gonna come back out after the weekend, say this.
I'm gonna turn that over to the Vice Mayor. Okay, that's it.